And the meeting is now called to order.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 1046 at sec, adequate notice at this meeting has been provided by advertising the Star Ledger, Onova Cokey, Haiti Progress, and Los Americano newspapers, and by the distribution to the administrative offices of Newark Public Schools. A copy of the meeting notice was also forwarded to City Hall for posting. This is a regular board meeting for Monday night, October 26, 2015.
Please rise for the flag salute. Role call.
Ms. Basketball Richardson. Ms. Carter.
Here.
Ms. Fonseca.
Here.
Mr. Hassan.
Present.
Mr. Jackson.
Present.
Mr. Lewis.
Present.
Mr. Rashidi.
Here.
Mr. Selinger.
Present.
Chair Perello.
Present.
Coram is present, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. I want to bring greetings from Ms. Regina Sharp, Principal from University High School.
Good evening, Superintendent Serf, Board Chair Ms. Perello, School Advisory Board members, families, students, and honored guests. Welcome to University High School. It is a pleasure for the Phoenix family to host the State Advisory Board meeting tonight. At this time, I would like to recognize Mr. Dixon, Mr. Lawson, and the members of the University High School Band and Choir for their performance as you enter this evening. Please give them another round of applause. This year at University High School, the motto is "Good to Great." We believe that to be great, you must G) give your all every day, R) respect yourselves and others, E) endure through tough times, and A) achieve at the highest levels, and T) transform the world around you. When you consider that Isaiah Odom, class of 2015, just received the Hall of Fame Athlete of the Year Award and Scholarship, and consider that our debate team, under the leadership of Kadija Bati and Heaven Montague, have placed at the Yale Bronx Science National Debate Tournament and were champions in Maryland last weekend. When you look at the fact that our senior class will have the first of several trips to feed the homeless this Thursday, when you see that there are smart boards in every classroom at University High School, and an upgraded cafeteria and breakfast program, and not to mention that our amazing choir will be making all-star performances during this holiday season, it is safe to say that "good to great," these are no longer just words at University High School. We live this. Thank you for your time and attention. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sharp. Ms. Sharp, I just wanted to make sure that we are going to have a band performance? No, the band.
The band and the chorus performed as our guests were entering this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, is there a motion to approve the minutes as a whole?
Motion.
Second, Hassan. That Ms. Fonseca? Carter. I got a motion moved by Ms. Carter, second by Mr. Hassan, to approve the minutes as a whole. That's voting on the block on the August 25th minutes and the September 10th minutes. All favor?
Aye.
Any posers abstain? Motion carries. Can we have a motion to actually vote on the minutes now?
So moved.
Mr. Hassan, is there a second? Ms. Carter. Motion to actually approve minutes stated August 25th, 2015, minutes stated September 10th, 2015, moved by Mr. Hassan, second by Ms. Carter. All in favor?
Aye.
Any posers abstain? Motion carries. Minutes both approved.
Thank you very much. Now, I would like to take this opportunity to welcome all of you to our meeting. It is engaged citizens like yourself that keep us excited about serving in this capacity. Thank you for being engaged and attending tonight. In addition to Ms. Regina Sharp, Principal of University High School, thank you for allowing us to host our meeting here tonight. I want to first start off with congratulating Jersey City on obtaining full control on their district. Now, it is time for Newark to do the same. NJCUSAC was put in place in order to create the roadmap for Newark's local control. Therefore, as a community, we need to start thinking progressively and use NJCUSAC for its express purpose. Now, to board members around town. On October 14th, an executive session was held to discuss the budget, and Superintendent Serf has agreed to a public special meeting where the budget will be discussed with some transparency. Such meeting will occur on November 5th at Park Elementary School from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Last week, board members Hassan and I were invited to a meeting where Newark Public Schools' School Service Department was awarded a grant of $247,000 to implement an alternative breakfast program in 13 high schools. Some of the high schools include 6th to 8th graders. These schools are where we like to implement breakfast in the classroom. Newark was number 2 in the nation for feeding hungry students, but that is a practice is falling off significantly. With the assistance of this grant, we can assure that Newark does not lose this important practice. Additionally, Board Member Hassan attended the following events. Essex County School Board Association meeting, bargaining at the table at NJSBA training, visited Dr. Horton Elementary School for the launch of Google Expedition Virtual Fieldships, Urban School Board Committees, and Newark 360 Celebration. Vice Chair Lewis attended the Pop Warner Cheerleader Competition at Shabazz and spoke to the kids at Abington High School. Board Member Phil Stullinger attended all fire safety events in the school for fire safety month of October, including Belmont Runyon, Lafayette, Anshree Annex, Oliver Street, First Avenue, Hawkins Street, McKinley Elementary School, and Wilson Ave. Board Member LaShay Carter attended NJSBA Hudson County Meeting and 350 Newark Celebration. Board Member Antoinette Basketball Richardson attended George Washington Carver School Soccer Field Dedication and attended Essex and Hudson County NJSBA Meeting. Lastly, I attended Hudson County Meeting, First Avenue PTO Meeting, 350 Newark Celebration, and the Barringer High School Homecoming Fundraiser Parade and Football Game. We encourage for all the students, for all the schools, to invite us to their events and meetings, as we will gladly be in attendance. Other news, the board would like to salute all of the Latino students of the school district since the nation celebrated Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15th to October 15th. Now that we are into the second month of the school year, and students are now settled into their new grade, we should now be focusing on student achievement. This is the bedrock of regaining local control. In order to make student achievement a main focus of the district, there needs to be a clear focus on the implementation of the district improvement plan. If we can focus on this implementation, we will see our students reaching the academic benchmarks that have been set, which will help us towards our goal of local control. Lastly, I would like to acknowledge the Canvas for Education Team for using their Saturday mornings to canvass each neighborhood assigned and advise the community to our board meetings. We feel that this is something we should do every month. We need parents and community members to get more involved in this process. The community cannot wait until issues affect you directly, but then it would be too late to do something about it in a timely fashion. And additionally, things discussed in these meetings also have an impact on the community, so people should be here for their voices to be heard on matters that impact us all. Finally, the board will have Spanish translator at Park Elementary on December 15th, so please come to the meeting and take advantage of these services. Como Latina, me he enfocado en atraer más latinos en nuestras reuniones. Quiero que este proceso sea más inclusivo y que nos ayude a trabajar con todos en la comunidad. No podemos esperar hasta que algo nos afecte directamente para quejarnos. Tenemos que ser parte del proceso desde el principio antes que hay problema. Recuerden que todo lo que hablamos aquí les afecta a ustedes y a sus hijos. Tener traductores para incluir a los que no hablan inglés es un hecho histórico. Tenemos que aprovechar de esta oportunidad para enseñar que esto es un servicio necesario. Por favor, ven a la reunión en Park Elementary School el día 15 de diciembre. Allí vamos a seguir con el servicio de traducción. Gracias. This concludes my chair report. Next, we have our student representative report.
Good evening, fellow board members and community stakeholders, students, parents, and teachers. Last week on Thursday, October 22nd, 2015, I participated in a meeting at the Marion Bolden Student Center, attended by concerned students, leaders from schools like Weekwake, Science Park, and Arts. One of the most urgent issues discussed was on the deteriorating state of school facilities and the hazards it poses to student success and health. Across the district, we have buildings in operation for over 100 years. Oliver Street School, for example, has been using the same core infrastructure since their opening in 1869. And Lafayette Street School's last renovation was in 1908. Not to mention that the school's capacity is 650 students, and yet they have over 1,120. While Oliver and South Street School are planning to move into new facilities, construction for the later has been slow, and not all schools in Newark have been lucky enough to receive the same upgrade. Weekwake High School, for example, shares this building with alternative schools, and according to the experiences of current students, the condition of the non-academy floor is dismally poor in comparison to their Eagle Academy and Girls' Academy counterparts. Reports of broken lockers, dirty and non-functioning bathrooms, and abandoned classrooms are common. This is not the end of Weekwake's problems, though. One girl also mentioned that during emergency evacuations and fire drills, students are all brought to congregate at Weekwake's gym instead of the school's exterior. This is in itself a fire hazard and further complicates the logistics of moving students around in the school already split into three. Superintendent Serf said that he would look into this matter. Beyond the visible signs of neglect and dilapidation, however, I'm concerned more so about the invisible. Many of these facilities were built with materials now known to be toxic, asbestos, lead paint, etc., and without renovation, the leak in these carcinogens has become frequent. Eastside High School, for example, has its new media center sealed off and cleaned by professional crew last summer due to asbestos. It's evident that while the newer public schools may have spent $300 million over the past 10 years on infrastructure, either not enough has been done or this money has been unwisely spent. An inspection on all potentially compromised buildings should be done as soon as possible. The second issue discussed was the lack of college readiness resources. While guidance counselors are expected to help students with this, the overcrowding in many schools means that they're often swamped with more students than they can accommodate for. A centralized, easily accessible space where students can get help and sign up for the SATs, ACTs, researching super colleges, and completing applications is in high demand. And recently, the Student Center has completed applications with the YMS to open the Student Success Center, and this ran to a snag. Superintendent Serf said that he will also look into this matter and try to remove the obstacle. Perhaps, though, it would be better to have these centers in every ward, integrate into every high school's curriculum. If not possible, I happen to know that Rutgers University has a youth education employment success program that fulfills the same need, and NPS should be looking to partnership with them. YMS wrote a grant and received approval to open College Success Centers around Newark. Communicating these resources to parents and students remains a major obstacle, especially for those who don't have computer and internet access, therefore can't access the resources of the NPS website. In terms of academics, the student leaders show the interest in having computer programming classes implemented in grammar schools and high schools. Some of our managed schools like Science Park have started up such programs, and the Student Center hosts weekly classes on coding, but there is much room for improvement within our comprehensive schools. Other than preparing them for well-paying 21st century careers, having Newark students become proficient in programming opens us doors to a variety of STEM-related careers and scholarships directed towards minorities, women, and inner-city residents. There are many nonprofit organizations that the NPS can collaborate with to close this gap, such as Girls Who Code, so it's simply a matter of reaching out. All the issues mentioned, of course, reflect upon the longstanding concern of all students, teachers, and parents, that being the continued struggle between public and charter schools. After the vote in favor of North Star's new building and the debate over KIPs expansion last Monday night, many have called into question as to which of the two sides is gaining priority in obtaining the new facilities, the new college readiness resources, and specialized classes previously mentioned. The message coming from the students this month thus can be summarized in one sentence: Don't forget about us. As for some miscellaneous comments, I would like to remind the board of my hopes for revised election process for a student representative to be more inclusive, and I invite members of the board to work with me and to give their input on the project. Some ideas I have brainstormed with the ombudsman include having a junior representative and incorporating this wide online poll in which students select next year's representative from a list of candidates screened by the board. If any of these ideas interest you, feel free and contact me throughout the week. Thank you. This concludes the student report for the month of October.
Thank you very much. Next, we have our superintendent report.
Thank you. Yes, thank you very much. No, I was putting my specs on. Thank you very, very much, Chair Perello and Vice Chair Lewis, board members, student representative. I'm Mr. Ruben Santos. I'd like to welcome our parents, our educators, community members who are here tonight, and extend a special thanks to Principal Sharp and her team at University High for hosting us this evening. Thank you very, very much for allowing us to use your space. It's beautiful. I would also like to pay a special note of thanks to the many educators who are here today. There is no doubt in my mind that you are the heroes in this conversation, and I am deeply appreciative of the work that you do every day to bring a quality education to the children that we collectively serve. I know, as the chair indicated, that we will be hosting, or the board will be hosting, and I and my team will be participating in a public forum on the budget Thursday, November 5th, at Park Elementary School at 6:00. I do know that, and as we have talked about in a number of opportunities, it is no secret that we are collectively managing a complicated budget situation. I am pleased to report that we are making rather substantial progress in that regard, and I look forward to having a fuller report when we get together. But one thing that I have to say that I feel rather strongly about is that, and you know, I think there is blame on all sides for this, but the... There is a general narrative out there that it feels to me that fails to recognize the extraordinary progress and quality of education in so many of our schools and so many of our classrooms. So, the journey that collectively we traveled to get to this point, I think, does real disservice to everything that I have seen in the last 10 weeks in which I've been here. I've been to something like 30 schools, I've visited with teachers, I've visited in classrooms, and over and over again, I see quality and greatness. I also know that we have far to travel before any of us are satisfied that we have done all that we can to elevate all of our children to the greatness that they deserve, but I am very weary, I have to say, of the narrative of negativity and failure, particularly in light of the really wonderful things I see going on in many schools and classrooms. And let me just mention a few of those things because they are very meaningful to me. There has been an extensive investment in technology. I was interested in the comments before. Since 2011, we have purchased over 11,000 Chromebook laptops over... You know, I'm not going to speak over people. If you would like to hear me speak, that's fine. I'm going to wait until you get...
We would like to hear Superintendent Serf make his report. Please be mindful and let him speak. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I was present with a board member at the Dr. William Horton School. By the way, there's a special exception for folks under 12 months old. I had the honor of meeting with teachers at our Digital Learning Initiative, an effort led by our great curriculum team to ensure that teacher leaders across the district learned support instructional technology, and indeed, this past weekend, as you'll hear more about later, the district was awarded a national award for its investment in and progress in digital learning. I am particularly focused on the academic rigor that is increasingly characterizing the quality of instruction in the classroom, from new curriculum in reading and math, to a partnership with the student achievement partners to really energize the transition towards a new and more rigorous set of expectations for students and all around. The training in our LIFT and our PLI programs, you'll hear more from Assistant Superintendent Roger Leon and some of our great educators as the evening progresses, but I have to tell you that the progress that has occurred in the recent past, really with the blood, sweat, and tears of our educators and administrators, are really rather impressive. There's an online portal for our educators that provides access to extensive instructional resources, all of which align to state-of-the-art curriculum being implemented in our classrooms. There's year-long instructional plans online, there's unit planning templates online, there are instructional strategies, literally standard by standard, classroom by classroom, online. If you had the opportunity, as I did, to participate in the Principal Leadership Institute, the intense training over the summer, or the Leadership Institute for Teacher Teams, or the Digital Learning Initiative, you see the craftsmen and women who are our educators focusing on learning, developing, and honing their craft, and an enormous amount of support that I believe is yielding great things for many, many kids in our classrooms. We have also focused on, and we need to continue to focus on, aspects of learning that go well beyond and outside of reading, writing, and arithmetic, and the work that happens in math and science and English language arts. And I focus particularly on social and emotional well-being. We've made some very important and, I believe, progressive policy shifts on how we support the social and emotional well-being of our students. It's epitomized by our new Student Support Team structures, we call them SSTs, in all schools. Through this structure, a number of adults, including teachers, administrators, and not just guidance counselors and social workers, have a responsibility for the social, emotional, as well as academic well-being of children. I had a wonderful moment at Belmont Runyon School last week where I got to witness firsthand what is known as a "restorative circle," and that is, a child had engaged in an act of acting out of misbehavior, and I watched a magnificent teacher sit around with students who were engaging the child and how his behavior had affected them and how he might do differently in the future. I'm so pleased to report that the suspension rate in our schools is 37% down over the last several years. So, these are children who, rather than being pushed out of an academic environment, are finding their way back into the mainstream of the academic experience. Over the last four years, and I give tremendous credit to Valerie Wilson and her team, we have now extended free lunch and breakfast to all students, and that is a very, very, very big deal. If you are not eating, it's very hard to learn. That is a very significant development that has been led by Val and her team. Some of us were present, including members of this board at the George Washington Carver just a couple weeks ago school, where we joined in the celebration of a brand-new soccer field. I especially want to thank Roger Leon again and Principal Burnett for their leadership in securing this new resource for all of our students. This was also done in partnership with the Red Bulls, and we are eager to take them up on their promise to extend this great gift to a number of other schools around the city. I have focused extensively on visiting the students who are meeting particular challenges, and I've visited the John F. Kennedy School, the New Jersey Regional Day School, and met with extremely talented educators who commitment to our students is reflected in their programming and supports. It's a very, very, very moving, moving experience to see the quality of the work and the commitment and the dedication of our education professionals in this. I'm pleased also by the wide and ever-widening array of career and technical education and thematic programming in our schools. At Weekwake, allied health is being revived, where all ninth graders are now taking Introduction and Health Careers courses. At Shabazz, we are currently in year two of creating academy structures built around the theme of athletics, sports medicine, marketing, and communication. At Bard, we have a school model for which students not only take high school coursework, but also take the first two years of college coursework over the course of their 11th and 12th grade, and this past June, the school successfully graduated its first class of students. 51 students graduated with a high school degree and an Associate of Arts degree as well. These are just a few examples. I don't mean to be Pollyannaish about this. I know that there are any number of challenges, and I know that these are complicated times in many important ways, but what I do want to stress is that it is not reasonable or fair or a service to our community and our educators who are working so hard not to highlight the successes as well as the challenges we collectively face. I'm going to hand the podium or microphone metaphorically over to School Business Administrator Valerie Wilson in a moment, who will share updates on CUSAC, which is one of the main purposes of the meeting. It'll be followed by a presentation by Assistant Superintendent, who I know is ably teamed with several of our educators, who are going to walk us through a deeper elaboration of our curriculum and instruction strategy. But just to set the scene for the CUSAC discussion that is to come, let me just provide a little bit of context and framework. CUSAC, as you know, is the name of a statute. It is New Jersey's Department of Education's Monitoring and Evaluation System for Public School Districts. It essentially says that the business of public education is divided into five different domains. You're about to be inundated with a whole lot of acronyms and initials, so let me start the process by telling you that each of these domains is called a DPR. The first is Instruction and Program. The second is Fiscal Management. The third is Governance. The fourth is Personnel. And the fifth is Operations. As the district meets the performance benchmark, every three years and occasionally on the interim, there is a review team that comes in from the state and county. It's a complicated process, we won't go into that in excruciating detail tonight, but they essentially assign a score to each of those different DPRs, each of those different domains that I just listed out. If the district is awarded a benchmark score of 80 or above, it becomes eligible for transition to local control or to the board. In Newark, the board, this board, the Newark School Board, has already taken control over fiscal management and operations. However, as indicated by our last CUSAC scores, the areas of instruction and program, 58%, governance, 72%, and personnel, 60%, are all areas where improvement is expected. Now, what we're going to be talking about tonight, here comes the next acronym, is a District Improvement Plan, or a DIP, which is submitted to the state. So, what the District Improvement Plan does very simply is it takes the various specific shortfalls or deficiencies that were identified in the CUSAC report and identifies what the district is doing to address them. The actual document is not the relevant document. The relevant event is when the state comes back at a schedule they will determine, but it certainly will be no later than this spring, to evaluate our progress against the District Improvement Plan, which we will be submitting on... Improvement Plan, which we will be submitting on November 1st. It's important to note that while the submission of the District Improvement Plan is a critical component of CUSAC and the transition to local control, it is not the only factor. We are working deliberatively and collaboratively with all partners, including this body, the Newark Board of Education, the Newark Education Success Board, and city leadership to build systems and processes to ensure that all foundations of the district are strong. We will continue to work expediently on this process, and I want to end my comments before heading over to Val by repeating my personal commitment that I am committed to the process to successfully return the district to local control. And frankly, I feel ever more optimistic that that is a completely achievable objective. And again, you have my personal commitment to achieving that. And with that, let me turn it over to Ms. Wilson. Thank you.
Thanks, Superintendent Serf. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, members of the community. We have several pieces that we will be showing you as part of the superintendent's report this afternoon. We're going to start with our NJCUSAC report, which is required. As the superintendent pointed out, we will be talking about a DIP and an SOA. So let's talk about the CUSAC timeline. Superintendent pointed out for you that there are five areas in which the district is measured. A score of 80 or above determines that we are high-performing. In August, we shared with you the state's results from our 1314 District Performance Review, the DPR. This was released in July. In September, NPS worked with board committees, and there were several, in the area of Governance, which would be the Legal Committee, in the area of Instruction and Program, which would be the Curriculum Committee, and in the area of Personnel. Those were the three areas in which we did not score 80 or above to develop a District Improvement Plan, or what is known as the DIP. The DIP is something that generates as a result of your not scoring high-performing in a specific area. In October, we are presenting to you two things this evening, something called the Statement of Assurance, which is an annual requirement as part of the NJCUSAC timeline, and also the District Improvement Plan. In November, both of these will be submitted to the New Jersey Department of Education, and hopefully in the spring, about six months after we submit, we expect an interim review of our DIP plan. Let me just interrupt once here. If there is someone who drives a royal blue Honda Accord, it is about to be towed, it is parked in someone's driveway, could you please move it? So, what is our Statement of Assurance? This is an annual event. NJCUSAC is a three-year event. You get a full review every three years. On the in-between years annually, the district must complete an SOA. So right now, we are completing the SOA based on our 2014-15 school year, and there are approximately 50 items on that. The difference here is that we must complete the SOA in all five areas, and we score ourselves. So in terms of the categories on the SOA, and the SOA is a subset of the District Performance Review, there are five indicators in the area of Instruction and Program. Please note that these indicators do not have anything to do with student performance. They have to do with the operations of having a curriculum, making sure the curriculum is timely, all of the factors such as that. So we are able to say that we have all of those things in place. It is on our performance indicators where we have some difficulty scoring. In the fiscal area, there are nine indicators that we are able to respond yes to, which gives us 90%, putting us in the high-performing category. In Governance, we can score yes on all 10 indicators, giving us 100%. In the area of Personnel, we can score yes on all five indicators for 100%. And in the area of Operations, we can score yes on 19 of 20 indicators, giving us a score of 95%. So if we took the DPR today and applied it to Newark, we stand in pretty good shape except for our Instruction and Program piece specifically related to student performance. Next slide. The DIP is that plan I told you we have to develop because we did not score high-performing in three of our areas. And in those three specific areas in 2013-14, we scored 72% on Governance, 60% on Personnel, and 58% on Instruction and Program. Please note, these are the scores assigned by the state after the onsite review is completed. We're going to describe the strategies and steps we're going to use to improve in those areas, and we're going to outline for you the future evidence that will demonstrate that we have improved in these areas. In the area of Governance, there are specific indicators which we did not meet. The specific indicator is in the left-most-hand column, and it talks about 3A and 3B. By the way, these documents and the full DIP, DPR, and SOA will be available on the district's website beginning tomorrow. The first indicators that we did not meet were written policies for financial planning, fiscal, and budget goals. The comment the state made was that financial processes did not clearly match or align with NPS strategic initiatives. So how are we going to correct that? In order to correct or improve that, we've got to make sure that, one, we ensure that all our financial processes are aligned with all our priorities. So if we're going to spend money, student achievement is one of the first areas that we have to focus on because we've got to improve Instruction and Program. So when you see the budget later this year, you should be able to tell at the public hearing that this particular amount of money is being invested specifically towards student achievement and tied to that particular strategic initiative to ensure success. We're going to have to have a staff development plan, and we're going to talk about our New Jersey-wide assessments. So investment in improving student achievement, investment in staff training to help improve student achievement, and investment in how our students perform on tests in terms of having them ready, whether it's test-taking strategies, whatever it is, but you will see that financial investment. We want to outline priorities and relevant gap codes. Gap codes are what ties the budget together. Nobody expects everybody to know all the codes, but what we need to do is clearly indicate the programs, the functions, that we are tying our dollars to, and that comes through gap coding. We're going to provide a professional development plan for NPS educators. So all of those things should be aligned to help us improve our scores in Governance. On the SOA, one of the other categories that we... You will see that the District Improvement Plan goes back and forth between the SOA and the DPR because that's how they do it. We have a finding that our minutes were not timely, and we did not have them available at the appropriate timing. Since then, remember, this result is two years old. Since then, we've put in electronic school boards, which is a web-based system that you see we're using tonight, and we have the ability, the board approved minutes this evening for their last meeting, which is right on time, right on schedule. The third item under Governance was the submission of employment contracts. There are specific individuals in the district who require contracts, the superintendent, the assistant and deputy superintendents, and myself. Those contracts are expected to begin on July 1st. In this district, we sometimes do not meet that July 1st deadline, but when the team came in, I want to impress upon everybody, we did have contracts in place for the current school year. Those contracts had been reviewed by the county office, and they had been approved. The only piece we did not meet was the timeline, and we will push hard on this next time around because since then, I've researched, and I can't find a timeline in the statute. Next. Personnel. In that area, we had a write-up in terms of job descriptions and appointments of staff. So you will see that the deficiencies, once again, in 1314, were the highly qualified teacher records, which indicated that some teachers were teaching outside of their certificated area. So how are we going to correct that? Well, we've got to reconcile staffing data to ensure it is consistent amongst our records and systems. We've actually done audits of staff certifications, so now we don't just know their main certification. If a staff member has two or three other certifications, we also have those listed. We want to provide and verify their certifications during the hiring process. We want to update our process for teacher reassignments because, you know, a school has to operate. Something happens, and an principal needs to move a teacher, but we have to make sure that that movement, while necessary for student success, is within the guidelines and with the certifications that the teacher has. So we're going to conduct biannual audits to verify certification because you start out the school year with the certification and the right class. If there is a movement within the school, whether for someone being sick, some kind of replacement has to be made, we've got to ensure that we are keeping our records in sync. In the area of our personnel health records, they wanted to ensure that our health records were stored separately, which is what's called a HIPAA requirement. It's a Privacy Act associated with health information. Our records, in fact, were stored separately. But what we found here was that the team branched out into other areas in terms of the files that we had that had not been collected or had not been filed. So we needed to update our personnel file requirements. We're going to develop a digital process to ensure that we are able to find files. Digitizing our files is going to... It's not going to find all of our files, but it's going to ensure that some of the pieces that may be missing or may have been misfiled by human error, we will be able to find them electronically. We've started a pilot, and then we're going to implement that full-scale, and we're going to audit our personnel files for our most recently hired employees so that we can ensure that from point X going forward, our files have some integrity to them, and we have the accurate information for all employees. The largest piece of our District Improvement Plan circulates around our Instruction and Program. Now, we will see here that in DPRs 1 through 5, District Performance Reviews, in the area of Literacy and Math, our deficiency in 1314 was that we had inadequate performance and progress on NJASK for both Language Arts literacy and for math. So we want to make sure that we shore up that area. I can tell you, in the two years since our review, we have a curriculum in place, we have the operational pieces. Once again, it goes to that assessment. In the operational part of our DPR, we can actually score 64 points, and if you look at our scoring, we get all of those points. It is the 36 points that are associated with student achievement that is the heavy lift for the district. So in order to align that and to ensure that we are able to move that needle, we have to continue to improve the curricular supports and training that we've aligned to college readiness standards. We have institutes for teachers, which support the work of teacher teams, known by the acronym LIFT, Leadership Institute for Teacher Teams. We want to use the universal design for learning to ensure that all our students can access rigorous content. And we want to develop a strategic plan. That's going to be the major part of our work over the next couple of months, in which we plan to involve multiple stakeholders. Some of you will remember our last strategic plan, Great Expectations. That plan was developed with a significant amount of community effort. That is a best practice in the industry, and it is what we will be doing to develop our new strategic plan. We're going to include educators, family members, board members, and determine how we will meet our multi-year goals. So that's going to be our focus in terms of the DPRs, in terms of Literacy and Math. With regards to Science, the deficiency was, two years ago, that 70% of our students did not reach proficiency on the Science NJASK, New Jersey Assessment of Skills and Knowledge. We have science educators participating in a statewide gap analysis project because the science curriculum is not fully cooked, right, Dr. Perkins? It's something that's in progress, and districts are expected to have that, but we want to transition our curriculum, our current curriculum, to New Jersey's adoption of the next-generation science standards, NGSS, because that's where we need to be. We want to support the work of science teacher teams, and we want to continue the Leadership Institute for Teacher Teams. So there are teams of teachers, teams of math teachers, teams of language arts teachers, teams of science teachers, who are all working within their core areas to develop best-practice solutions and initiatives to ensure that we are going to move the needle on student achievement. DPR 7, in the area of Instruction and Program, spoke about graduation through the High School Proficiency Assessment, HESPA. We did not meet that minimum high school graduation rate via HESPA, which meant that 80% of our students needed to be using that method to graduate. Doesn't mean students weren't graduating. We can stand to improve on that segment too, but they weren't graduating using the structured formal process. What have we done in terms of strategies, and where are we going? We're offering new online courses for students to earn credits, so that's for the undercredited students. We're providing high school teachers training to improve their methods of instruction. We continue to support Acceleration Academies to assist the overaged and undercredited students. And we have two transfer schools that assist our students who have not experienced success in the traditional environment. We want to continue to support better curricula in math and literacy. Once again, that common thread, curriculum, training, development of opportunities, and opportunities for... I don't have a better word for our students. DPR 18, while the... And this is specifically around the area, the use of technology. While the assessment indicated that we had technology, they felt that the infusion of technology into our classrooms and our curriculum was not consistent and that it ranged significantly. Since then, I'm happy to say that we've invested in almost 10,000 new devices in the 1415 school year. Yes, to support PARC, but they are not only to be used when PARC occurs, they are to be infused into our curriculum, and we will ensure that by ensuring that our teachers receive additional training and instruction and development on how to infuse that curriculum. We will use the online courses that we are offering, and we've launched what's known as the Digital Learning Initiative, which will provide instruction... And we've launched what's known as the Digital Learning Initiative, which will provide instructional strategies involving technology. So we're going to continue to push against student performance and to ensure student success. Rob, is that the last slide? So that, this evening concludes the presentation on the DIP and the SOA. They both will be submitted on the district's behalf. Both will be certified by the superintendent and the board chair and both will be submitted to the state and we will look forward to our new assessment. As a continuation of our discussion around curriculum, I'm going to ask my colleague, Mr. Roger Leon, to prevent on curriculum and instruction strategy with some interactive examples. Mr. Leon?
Mr. White, can you please? Mr. White, Mr. White, can you please sit down? Mr. White, Mr. White, may you please sit down? Mr. White, Mr. White? Mr. White, Mr. White, thank you very much. Mr. Leon? Next, we have Mr. Roger Leon. Order, order, we, we have a very long agenda. I appreciate, we have a, we have a very long agenda. Please be mindful. If you continue, if you continue, we will then call for recess and then the meeting will be longer than what is expected. Order. Please be silent as we need to continue.
I'd like to have a motion.
There is a motion for recess.
Motion to recess.
Second, Hassan. All favor. Aye.
Which person? Please respect the speakers on the list, please. Thank you, Mr. Leon. Please respect the speakers. Please.
If you allow Mr. Leon to speak, then, then we will have community.
We have several other parts of the report before public participation, Madam Chair.
Mr. Leon. We have numerous reports that we have to address. Please let us continue with our meeting and then we will have public participation. Mr. Leon?
Good evening, Mr. Superintendent, Madam President, members of the board. And to the students that are actually up, you could stay standing. Those of you who have already made particular comments, I think that this portion of the presentation that is part of the superintendent's report is one that I think will make lots of sense. I hear you, Ms. Baker. We're going to get into all of, I think you're right, we're going to get into that. That's absolutely right. Superintendent has already indicated, it's his hands, as soon as he walked in here, he has a mess that he's going to work on, we're going to get into that. That's right. It is a little ironic, if I can be so blunt, that we are at University High School of the Humanities, home of the phoenix. I have shared many a times before that the South Ward is one of the several gems of our city and with great reasons. Not only was I born in this city, still live in this city, attended its schools, was not only a teacher, a proud principal at two schools, and in an executive position in the last couple of years, I served for six years as the proud principal here at University High School. There's a little bit of irony with this evening, that I must be very blunt with you, about the birth of this school began at then Southside High School, today Malcolm X Shabazz High School. That's where this school was created, a school within a school on a shared campus in the late 1960s in a response to tumult that was occurring in our great city. It was then a very tumultuous time. In conversation with the superintendent, one of the issues that he wanted me to do, and I am going to do it, is to brag about our school district. That is what he has asked me to do and that is what I am going to do, because there is greatness in the Newark Public Schools. The standard of college and career readiness is what every single member on the dais is searching for in our schools and arguably from the people who live on my block. It is what the residents want as well. To the parents that are here, and I know that the parents that are at home, all of the parents really want their children to live a life far better than their own. So I've worked in this school district for a little over 23 years and those who know me know that I am very, very direct. We have moved from a distribution of compliance-driven responsibilities in our schools, from the summer of 2011 to present, to an effort of transforming our school leaders and improving our schools. There were three designed pathways to getting us there. The first deals with the professional development of not only our principals, our school leaders in the schools, but our teachers as well. The second is the rigor of curriculum, including the integration of technology. The purpose of the, well, we'll deal with that. The purpose, the purpose of the Chromebooks was not to take the PARC exam. That's not what their purpose. Yep. The third area was giving teachers and principals the tools to monitor student progress to be able to differentiate instruction. So two weeks ago, the Program and Instruction School Advisory Board Committee met the principal of the Benjamin Franklin School, Marisol Diaz, who's here with us this evening, and two of the coaches that work at that school. Last week, I had the privilege of presenting a very detailed status as to where we were as it relates to the implementation of the curriculum across the district. This evening, instead of doing both of those presentations, I have both coaches here with us, Ms. Panich and Ms. Blasquez. I know that there are members of the Benjamin Franklin School that are here that are going to go into, to, going to address the areas in which that school has modeled for us as an example of the curriculum implementation that we are doing in this district to get us out of that 58% hole that we are actually in. My pleasure to present to you the ladies from Benjamin Franklin School.
Good evening. My name is Amy Panich. I'm an instructional coach for math at Benjamin Franklin School.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Blasquez. I am also an instructional coach for literacy at Benjamin Franklin School.
Today, we would like to highlight for you how our students engaged in a project-based learning unit using expeditionary learning and Math in Focus to investigate how the toy industry may shape their future college and career choices. So let's begin by letting you hear directly from the students.
Good afternoon, Franklin School, and welcome to our first ever live webinar. Let's get started. Raise your hand if you'd like to go to the toy store. I bet almost everyone held up their hand. Now think about how you know where to go to find your favorite toys in the store. You probably thought about how the boy toys are in blue aisles and the girl toys are in pink aisles. That is exactly what we're going to talk to you about today.
Students were learning about simple machines and expeditionary learning and tables and line graphs in Math in Focus. This project required students to engage with the curriculum in a way that forced them to dig even deeper into their curiosities about the toy industry while developing stronger.
Please allow the principal to speak.
This project required students to engage with the curriculum in a way that forced them to dig even deeper into their curiosities about the toy industry while developing stronger research and communication skills.
Please allow Ms. Diaz to speak.
Parents, there are children in the room. Parents, there are children are in the room. There's children in the room.
Please allow Ms. Diaz to speak.
There are children in the room. If you don't respect yourself, at least respect your children.
During the project, students completed a school-wide survey.
Order.
As they completed their daily Math in Focus lessons, they analyzed the they analyzed this real-world data collected from their...
Audience, please allow...
...and some of the hypothetical data presented in the textbook. They were also researching simple machines. Students knew that the culminating project would require them to share their expertise with the larger school community through a Google Hangout. Participating in the monthly LIFT and Digital Learning Institutes pushed us to use technology, specifically Google Apps for Education, to advance learning for all students. Students used a Google Form to survey nearly 600 students about their favorite toys. The Google Read/Write toolbar gave all students access to the information regardless of reading level and native language. Using Google Spreadsheets, students created bar graphs and line graphs to analyze this large data set. This gave them complete ownership of their learning and led to authentic conclusions such as why do more boys and girls like Connects? And why do boys and girls like the kitchen set equally until first grade? This work opened up the college and career pathways to both boys and girls in fields such as accounting, data analysis, and computer programming. The expeditionary learning task called for students to use what they had learned about simple machines to write an editorial for a fictitious magazine. We replaced the concept of fictitious with our school community and shared an authentic audience. Using Google Hangout, students hosted a live webinar titled "Disrupting the Pink Aisle" that was viewed in every classroom and even in some homes. Students shared their research findings, their opinion on which simple machine helps people the most in their daily lives, and gave an example of a homemade simple machine. This work opened up the college and career pathways to both boys and girls in fields such as engineering, architecture, and television.
Wedge helps us do everyday work easier. A wedge is two inclined planes joined together. Its job is to push things apart. For example, axes are used to cut wood in half and knives cut our food. Doorstoppers are used to hold doors open. Here, I made a car by adding wheels and axles to an empty Yoo-Hoo box. Then I created an inclined plane for the car to travel down. At the bottom, there is a wedge to stop the motion. I also created an inclined plane, an inclined plane as a ramp for my car. I attached a pulley to lift the car up the ramp. The second inclined plane acts as a wedge to stop the car's motion.
The webinar concluded with a challenge for all students to build a gender-neutral simple machine of their own and enter it into our first-ever Yellow Isle School Fair. We received more than 100 projects in a week's time. So let's conclude the same way we began by letting you hear directly from the students.
Good morning, Franklin School. So I bet I know what everyone is wondering. Who are the winners of the first-ever Yellow Isle Fair? Before we announce the winners, we would like to thank everyone who supported this project. We had over 100 projects entered and students from over 30 classrooms visited the fair and voted for their favorite project.
Everyone was blown away by the creativity. Many people had a difficult time deciding on just one project to vote for. So give yourselves a round of applause.
Everyone who entered their project will receive a certificate of participation. And now, without further ado, we will announce the winners of each grade level. At the end of the Hangout, all three winners from each grade level should come up to room 305 for this prize.
This project helped us transform the culture of learning at our school. Not only did students learn the math and literacy content at a much deeper level, but students learned how to deal with real-world issues, how to take initiative and responsibility, how to build confidence, problem-solve, work in teams, and communicate ideas and manage themselves effectively.
Thank you for allowing us to share with you tonight.
To Ms... I want to just take this opportunity to recognize again the staff here that's from Benjamin Franklin School. Obviously, the two presenters, the two coaches that are doing a fabulous job there, both Ms. Panich and Ms. Blasquez, thank you very much. To the principal of the school, Marisol Diaz, thank you. And to any and all of the teachers that are here, thank you as well.
Madam Chair.
I guess.
So first, from the Curriculum and Instruction Committee of the Newark Public Schools, I also want to thank Franklin School. I want to thank the teachers. This obviously was not the most of ideal circumstances with all the issues that are in the air today. But you know, you just showed the strength of Newark Public Schools' teachers in being able to persevere through any circumstance. And I hope that some folks were able to get it in what you were giving this evening. And I hope that we have another opportunity for you to share with a broader audience because your work is exceptional and it is a model for the district that needs to be shared and that everyone does need to learn about. So I want to just personally thank you for coming out here tonight with this presentation.
We concur with you, Chairperson Richardson. And so one of the requests that Advisory Board Member Carter and yourself made last week and that we agree is that we will actually put links on the district's web so that families could also look at some of the incredible work that their children are doing at the school as well as other parents who are interested in seeing the greatness that is at the Benjamin Franklin School. So once again, thank you all. And that brings the abridged version of the superintendent's report to a close.
There are two other pieces of the superintendent's report that we are going to have delivered, Dr. Perkins, with harassment, intimidation, and bullying.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Thank you. As part of the required report to the district on the self-assessments that all schools are required to do in harassment, intimidation, and bullying, I appreciate the opportunity to share this brief summary report. I will be joined in part by Ms. Karen Fennell, who is the lead for high school work in this area. If we go to the next slide. So just as a reminder, we do this every year where we have all schools do a self-assessment on the work they're doing to prepare, to do everything they can to combat harassment, intimidation, and bullying. And this self-assessment allows schools to develop specific resources and to develop specific plans so that there's prevention, remediation, and reporting of the HIV incidents in the upcoming year. This report focuses only on the self-assessment that begins at the beginning of the year. As we will do every year, in the middle of the year, we will report on the actual incidents as required by the state and as related to CUSAC. If we go to the next slide. So further reminding us of the context of where this report comes from, it is required by the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act that was passed several years ago. And it ultimately leads to the state reviewing our self-assessments, which will happen this week, and then posted online for anyone to review the specific grades that those self-assessments revealed for schools. The report and the self-assessment process revealed several findings, which I'll go over in brief detail. What we accomplished thus far already is that we provide professional development training for our harassment, intimidation, and bullying specialists throughout the last school year. We have HIV specialists at all of our K-8 schools and at our high school comprehensive and magnet schools. And their job is to provide information and training to conduct investigations, to provide mediation as well as other support that you can see there in terms of conflict remediation, relationship improvement, and peer relationships. And finally, we have been able to increase the involvement of these HIV specialists on each school's school safety team. All of this will again be posted on our website after the review from the state per the process that we follow each year and again connected to CUSAC. In terms of areas that we will work on this year based on the self-assessment, we will increase the school-based prevention programming through conflict resolution mediation, further HIV remediation and consequences work, suicide prevention, and peer relationships and social skills training and support. We have implemented the Week in October, the Week of Respect, and we've also begun to conduct our professional development training sessions for these specialists. In conclusion, the work that we will be sharing will be posted and the work that is supported by Ms. Karen Fennell for the high schools and Ms. Anita Ziad for the elementary and middle schools. We will report back to the district, sorry, and to this board later in the year once we have those reports again as required by state requirements. That concludes the report on the HIV self-assessment.
Thank you, Dr. Perkins. Ms. Rodriguez, can we have the presentation? Okay, I think there's been a change, Ms. Hitchcock.
Good evening.
Excuse me. Shouldn't Vanessa Rodriguez be giving this report?
As the general counsel, it is my practice to generally read all the reports into the record.
Vanessa, last meeting said that she was gonna do the OFAC report. So why can't we have her do the OFAC report right now?
With all due respect, for the purposes of last week where we hopefully vetted a lot of the questions, Ms. Rodriguez did read the report. As general counsel, I am prepared and I'm going to read on behalf of the district to present to the board this evening.
Excuse me, I just want to voice my objection to this change because Ms. Rodriguez did say that she was going to read the report. The report specifically deals with the department that she is responsible for and it is her responsibility to read this report. This is what she said she was going to do. If there's a change, we need to know what the real reason for the change is because she said she was going to read the report.
And Madam Chair, also, also to reiterate behind my fellow colleagues, let's not forget that these people, excuse me, these district staffers have obligations, okay? And they're also paid very well to deliver. Yet again, an issue coming out of personnel.
As a general counsel, I am reading the OFAC report, which speaks to the Newark Internal Audit Unit overtime audit for fiscal years 2012 through 2013 and 2013 through 2014. The report was submitted in August of 2015. Please note that this report in its full entirety has been posted on the NPS website as of last Wednesday, the day after the business report, which was the first time in which the report was presented to the board this evening. The board does have also a full copy of this report. So I will be reading highlights of the report with respect to the key findings and recommendations. The purpose of the audit was to determine that overtime is properly authorized, documented, and paid-for hours actually worked and calculated properly in accordance with union contracts, district policies, and applicable regulations. In addition, the audit was designed to evaluate the district's current policies and procedures. The audit included a review of overtime payments, current policies, and union contracts. As a result of the audit, the following seven deficiencies were noted. First, the district overpaid eight employees in an amount totaling $10,922.34 for duplicate hours. The recommendation with respect to that particular finding is that the auditors recommend that time sheets are reviewed to ensure that no dates or hours have been duplicated. The second finding is that the district failed to provide supporting documentation for overtime payments totaling $56,619. The recommendation by the auditors is that the auditors recommend that the district retain all overtime supporting documentation in accordance with the current State of New Jersey Records Retention Regulation. The third finding is that hours subject to overtime pay were calculated incorrectly for one employee. The finding, excuse me, the recommendation for that finding is that the auditors recommend that the district standardize work hours for each functional department to provide coverage as needed. The fourth finding is that the district did not comply with its policy that all overtime be pre-approved in writing. The recommendation for that particular finding is... Pardon me. Is that the auditors recommend that the district stipulate the required signatures needed in its policies and procedures in order to process any overtime requests for payment and that no payments are made without proper authorization. The sixth finding is that the time sheets were often missing required signatures. The recommendation is that department heads should be provided with overtime budgets at the beginning of each fiscal year. Detailing the accounting of overtime expenditures by employees should be provided to department heads no less than quarterly for review. And the final finding is that overtime was not calculated correctly for local 32 of the AFL-CIO. And the finding, the recommendation for that particular finding is that the district must follow the terms of the memorandum of agreement and calculate overtime for local 32 employees based on hours worked in excess of 40 per week. As the board is aware and as members of the community may also be mindful of under the statute, the district is required 30 days from the presentation of this report to return and present what is called a CAP, a corrective action plan. And that will be done very timely at the November board meeting. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Ah, yes, Mr. Lewis. Mr. Lewis and then Mr. Hassan.
Madam Chair. So first, first thing I want to point out, I want to support my board colleagues and say that Vanessa Rodriguez should have gave this report. She is responsible to do so. I also want to point out that when we're talking about CUSAC, this is the second incident under the administration watch that happened in personnel. I also want to point out, under Ms. Anderson's leadership since a certain person was put in charge of this department, our scores in personnel have been going down each year. And I, as a board member and also as the Chair of Finance, would like to urge the superintendent, if we is going to take our district to local control, that we have to do some changes in personnel. We can't say we're gonna improve, improve. This is a serious budget. We can't keep slapping somebody on the wrist every time they mess up. Somebody have to pay for what's going on in personnel. And from where I come from, you start off at the top. And if Ms. Rodriguez was in charge of this department, it's about time that the top get dealt with.
May I respond?
I guess, Superintendent.
Madam Chair.
And if the district don't want to do something, I think we as a board should take our own actions.
Superintendent.
So here are the facts. The individual in charge of this department identified the problem, referred it to prosecutors, called in a state investigatory team, supported that effort. They came with a finding that in a billion-dollar budget, they found about $60,000 worth of problems and then has fully supported the change of controls. Let me also say that the overtime expense since 2011 has gone from $8.5 million to about $4 million through careful management of this, all of which gets redeployed into classrooms, teacher salaries, et cetera. If we want to engage in, if we want to engage in a personal attack, you can go ahead and do that. But I will tell you that it is not warranted by the facts presented here. Thank you.
I would like to see that in writing.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Superintendent, I just... Mr. Superintendent, I just, Mr. Superintendent, for the record, since you put this on the record, I would like to see that in writing.
Would be honored to put that in writing.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lewis, Mr. Jackson, Mr. Jackson first, and then Ms. Basco Richardson.
So, let me just first start off by saying, yet again, I'm very disappointed in the total disrespect that the district continues to show, not only to this board, but to the community as a whole. If Chief Talent Officer could present a CAP at our business meeting, a CAP could have been presented to the public meeting, and I'm not understanding why that didn't happen. But moving right, exactly, no accountability, yet again, shame, past the blame, past the buck. No one wants to take accountability, no one wants to take responsibility. That's the main issue here in North Public Schools. No one's accountable. It always happened on somebody else's watch, not my watch, and it stops today. So, a few things with the report from last week and, and hearing this report this week, and I'm not gonna take too much of the time, and I'm gonna get right along with the issue. So, if I'm understanding this correctly, there was no budget allocated for overtime?
Incorrect.
Okay, so what was the budgeted amount for overtime?
The amount that was spent.
Okay, so what is the dollar amount that was spent for overtime, since I have to be technical?
Superintendent, you going to answer?
I, I think something is wrong with my microphone, so I'm gonna ask my question again. What was the dollar amount spent in overtime?
Um, I don't have the report in front of me, you do, it's in the report.
Does anybody else have the answer? Ms. Wilson? Ms. Rodriguez, would you care to answer?
All right, is the specific question, sir, how much was spent on overtime?
Yes.
Yes, the, the answer, and I'm gonna have to give you a round number, is, but it, it is in the report, was, I believe, about $8.5 million, and now it's down to about $4.3 million.
Right, no, I, I understand that, so what was actually budgeted with being spent? What was?
I, I appreciate your question, I will have to get back to you in writing, I don't have that figure in front of me.
Okay, so, so now, my next question with that is, what has been put in place to remedy this issue of overpayment in overtime, and since obviously there was some poor management in terms of people fraudulently signing overtime sheets or whatever have you? And with that being said, the district pays money into a system called Kronos. Is that not used for overtime?
Kronos, as I understand it, sir, records the sort of punch-in, punch-out time, so yes, it does track hours.
Okay, so, if that, was that used for overtime? Because if so, that should have been able to catch this problem.
Well, well, what can happen, and I don't know that it happened in this instance, is people have other people sign in for them and sign out for them.
Kronos, 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 Superintendent, Kronos.
So, 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 let me just say this. What I'm, what I'm trying to get at, hold on, one second, one second, one second, one second. What I'm trying to get at is, as we all know, Kronos is a fingerprint system in which a person has to use their actual fingerprint. They are, I believe the company is called BioTrack or MorphoTrack, it must, it, the company did change names, however, what happens is, you submit your fingerprints to the state, and your fingerprints are then entered into a system. So in order to punch in and punch out, you have to punch in an ID number and then scan it with your finger. So, I brought that up because if the district is paying this money to use this computer system to have employees sign in and out, did this, was this used for overtime?
Right.
Because if it was used for overtime, it should have been able to catch the problem of people receiving pay for hours they didn't work.
So, first of all, I stand corrected about, about the fingerprint dimension of it, so thank you for bringing that up.
Superintendent?
That's it.
Ms. Wilson?
We'll, we'll be happy to provide a fuller explanation of the controls that have been put in place in this. I believe, as the general counsel said, that part of our duty in this regard is to provide a corrective action report, and that will be forthcoming. Thank you.
Ms. Basco Richardson?
Yes, two questions. One, Ms. Rodriguez, I know that you must have been aware that overtime was not clocked in via Kronos. So, my question is, at the point that you, the district, realized that this was a problem, why was the correction not made immediately? Or has the correction been made and is overtime? Oh, she's not here? Oh, she's here, okay, and if, if it was made, when was it made? That is one question. And the other question on the OFAC report, it refers to this as an internal audit. So who actually did the audit? Was this internal, as in done internally within the district, or did an outside entity do this audit? Who actually did this audit? And I'm asking that question for a very specific reason, because I want to know who decided to actually name the unions that the employees belong to, because I don't understand the necessity of that.
Good evening. Ms. Rodriguez?
Good evening.
Can we turn the mic down, please?
Okay, good evening, thank you. Good evening, board members, community members, educators, and students. So the first question was, when did this come to our attention? In the spring of 2014, it came to my team's attention that we had three employees who were abusing the system. At that moment, I requested support from our internal state auditors to do an internal review. We also had to refer the investigation at that point around those three employees to the prosecutor's office, which is still in process, so we don't have a final finding on that from the prosecutor's office. But we requested the support from our state auditors who did do this audit and presented the findings to us this August 2015. So we have been waiting since we requested for their review in the spring of 2014 to see what their findings would be, which arrived this August of 2015. In terms of the Kronos, the Kronos process did not include the functions when they were created for overtime. That was not a part of the Kronos process when it was created in the system. The entire overtime process has been a paper-based process going back many, many years. After this came to our attention, our team started...
Please allow Ms. Rodriguez to speak.
Our team started to work on building in the function into Kronos, which we will present next month as a part of our CAP. We've had a working group around this, and we also are piloting that, that new process in Kronos this fall across a number of departments to ensure that it works accurately before we implement it across the entire district.
Madam Chair. Ms. Carter?
I think at the last board meeting, at our business meeting, I asked what was the total of the amount that the three individuals were paid in overtime by the district. I was told I would get an answer. I haven't received that yet, as well as when do we intend to get that money back to go into our budget, being that we are currently facing a deficit or a gap within our budget.
Because it is currently, I think my response at the time was, I can look into whether I can share that, but it's currently in legal action, so I can't really get into the details of that, but I will look into see how much I can actually share at this time publicly.
So we don't know how much the district paid? Or we do know, but we can't say at the time?
We haven't been discussing the case.
Ms. Carter, with all due respect, we do have an active case with, at the prosecutor's office, to which they've indicated that they are seeking to move forward on, so with all due respect, they are leading in the investigation. We will give you that information as soon as we're able to give you that information.
Madam, Madam, Madam Chair.
Um, Ms. Fonseca first, and then Mr. Jackson.
Yes, please. Thank you, sorry. Ms. Fonseca.
Okay, so, um, I asked seven questions at the last meeting, and I specifically typed them while the meeting was going on, because I was so very upset to hear this report. I just want the community to know on behalf, I think I can speak for my other board members, but we're very upset that we're hearing about this at this moment. It breaks our heart to constantly come to meetings and hear about the failures of the district when we have students, family members, and educators come into this meeting trying to fight for local control. We're on board with you all, we, we understand what's going on, and we disagree with what's happening here. So I'm asking the district to please, and this comes from me, I, I think we all hear, but I think I can speak for all of us when I say this, you need to look into matters like this. This is unacceptable. We cannot continue to come to meeting after meeting after meeting and hearing failures happening in our district. Um, I'm a mom, I serve my community, we pay taxes in this community, we know what should be going into our schools, and to hear that money is being misspent and we're not getting clear answers, it's very unfortunate. We have to sit here in front of hundreds of people and hear our community be upset about matters like this, and when we hear about it, the answer is, you'll get an answer at a later time. This is not okay. We're, we're not happy about this matter. I'm expecting an answer in the next seven days. I don't think I should put in an Oprah request for this, but if I have to, I will. And I just want to let the community know that all the ans, the questions that I submitted, I will make sure that each of you receive answers to this, because we want to know who is responsible for this, who actually signed off on these overtime sheets, because as a manager, when you sign in and out, there got to be some type of backup. And the fact that no backup was provided, that's a huge failure. Who is responsible for implementing the policy? And what action is going to be taken? Not what action is going to be taken in the next school year, but what action is going to be taken now. We have schools lacking, and we need to make sure we do our part for our children. So I just wanted to let everyone know that we are asking the right questions, we're, we want answers to this, we, I don't believe that this is acceptable, and we want to make sure that we're doing what's right by our children, and overspending money that we don't have is not okay. So we're asking that you all know that we're trying to do what we have to do to get the answers for you. This was submitted in writing, and I requested answers in writing, because these answers are not working for me.
Ms. Fonseca? As, as you recall, I did respond to your email, and I invited you to an in-person meeting so that we can review that, and I also responded saying that as a part of the CAP, we do address all of those questions, which we will do. I agree with you, as I said last week, this is a huge concern for us. When this came to the attention of the talent team, we did take this very seriously, so much that we included the prosecutor's office, and we have been working ever since we were, we identified the problem to resolve it, and I'm happy to share more in the upcoming month when we review the CAP.
Ms. Rodriguez, thank you. Thank you, this is not personal for me, this has nothing to do with you or how you're responding, I appreciate your response, I know you immediately responded, and so did Mr. Surf, but it's a matter of us being able to, we're here to serve the community. Each and every one of us were elected. We were put in this position where we need to answer to the community, so when I come to a meeting like this, it breaks my heart, because I already know everyone is heated. So when we have to present something like this, and our answer to the people that have elected us, whether they voted for, for me personally or not, I know that they're the people that are voting for us to represent them. And when we have an answer like, we'll get back to you later, it's unacceptable. So this, I'm not saying this to you personally, I'm just saying, we need answers, because we're the ones that have to respond to the community. I feel responsible when I walk out the door and somebody's pulling me over, and they're like, why is this happening? Where, we need to know, we need to be clear on it, so that we can answer every single parent here, every teacher, even the students, even if they're not old enough to, to vote, they still have a right to know what's going on. So that's the purpose of me expressing this, I know we have a long meeting, I felt responsible to put this on the record, and I would appreciate a response, I know you're, you said you're gonna prepare it, I appreciate that, but when we come to these meetings, I like to have an answer, because we, we owe it to the people of this city.
I don't think we disagree. We completely agree, and we're gonna work with you to provide you the answers.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jackson.
So, just to piggyback on the issue, understanding that this is a legal matter, and we were given a, a grand total. Can you hear me now? Yeah, I can, I can hear myself. Okay, so, just to piggyback, and I understand that this is a legal matter, however, we were given a total of $58,000, roughly. I believe the question was, how much money did the persons in question receive, or how much money did the district spend out? Again, understanding that this is a legal matter, however, if we're preparing a CAP for this, we should get the amount that was wrongfully paid to these people.
I, I think you're entirely entitled to that, and we will get that to you with, immediately, immediately after this meeting.
Thank you. So now, a follow-up with that would be, since we've had, since we've caught this incident, is the district in any type of way looking through its books to find out how many more incidents we've had such as this? And going beyond, um, right, going beyond non-instructional?
Yeah.
Have we gone to instructional and administrative pay?
So, I, I'm sorry, looking beyond the overtime issue? I just want to understand your question.
No, looking beyond this particular issue, looking into any other issues with overtime throughout the district, in terms of anyone else, whether it be instructional, non-instructional, per diem, security, or administrative, any of those departments, have we, are there any issues with overtime?
There are, there are not specific issues, we are looking at the entire budget, we are already engaged in a process, as, as this board knows, of rebuilding the budget for, for next year, and in that context, I, you know, I, I don't think it's an overstatement, sir, to say we are looking at everything.
Ms. Basco Richardson? Ms. Basco?
Yes, in the interest of moving the agenda forward, can someone please clarify exactly what we are being asked to vote on today on this agenda item? Are we being asked to vote that we agreed with this report, or are we being simply asked to vote that the report has been presented to us? Because that might be two different votes, and I think we need clarity in order to move on.
Pursuant to the statute, it is the latter, which is that the board only will be voting on the fact that they have received the actual presentation of their report.
Thank you.
Anyone, board members? Ms. Carter? Okay, all right, next we have a motion for program and instruction.
Is the motion to take items as a block?
Madam Chair, I move to take one block vote on all of our program and instruction items.
Okay, Hassan, your second. Who's that? Mr. Rashidi? Motion to move the, sorry, the curriculum items as a block, moved by Mr. Hassan, second by Mr. Rashidi, all in favor?
Aye.
Any posers abstain? Motion carries, you have a motion to vote on the items now?
So moved.
Is there a motion for the finance operation to vote as a block?
We haven't voted yet. So the motion was moved by Mr. Hassan, your second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lewis, is the motion to actually vote on the curriculum items, all in favor?
Aye.
Any posers abstain?
Excuse me, point of order, did we actually vote on the OFAC report?
No, that's later on, that's later on, Ms. Basco.
I'm sorry?
It's later on, it's listed under legal, I believe.
Oh, thank you.
Can I ask that board members register their physical votes?
It's not on the computer.
Please vote on the program instruction items.
It's not coming up, Rob, do you have it coming up?
It's not?
It's up here, yours isn't up.
Is it working, board members?
Madam Chair, I'd like to move for a consent vote on our finance operation items.
Motion, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to move to public participation.
Um, Ms. Carter, let's just finish on the voting, which is only two more items, and that's it.
I've made a motion to move to public participation.
I second it. I second it.
Okay, we have a motion to amend the agenda to move up the public participation.
Second.
Okay, so it's moved by Ms. Carter, I believe, and second by Ms. Vasco Richardson, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any posers abstain?
Oppose.
I have Mr. Hassan on the opposition and Mr. Lewis on the abstention. Motion carries. We've got public participation. All right, board members, we've moved up the public participation prior to the finance and operations votes. So this is the public participation portion of the meeting. As a reminder, time limits for all speakers are enforced, there's no sharing or granting a speaking time to others. Speakers must be present when their name is called. Speakers are required to give names and addresses. The public participation portion of the meeting will be limited to one hour and thirty minutes. Examples of unacceptable behavior that are not permitted include but are not limited to naming district employees and engaging in personal attacks, slurs, excessive loudness, calling out, yelling, generally disruptive behavior, attempted disruptive meeting, or inciting others to do so. Public participation at these meetings is intended to allow individual members of public the opportunity to address the board administration on issues of public concern, not as a forum for two-way dialogue with the board or district officials. The superintendent or chair may respond to questions either at the end of the session, or responses may be provided at another time. The superintendent or chair may interrupt any speaker or terminate any speaking privilege if his comments are disruptive or obscene. An individual may be cautioned that a personally directed statement may be slanderous or defaming, and the individual may be liable for his or her statements. Attempts to hijack or filibuster proceedings, repeated interrupting or badgering the board members or district officials, repetitive truculent speech, or disregard of the rules of the quorum are not tolerated and may subject the individual to removal from the meeting. And if necessary, the meeting may be adjourned.
We have fifty-six speakers, therefore today we will be controlling the time limit because I want to be mindful that every single person that is in the list have the opportunity to speak. So when your time is up, your time is up. The first speaker is Ms.
Abdulay Diallo.
Oh, my name's Abdulay Diallo. I'm school president of Science Park High School, here to voice our collective concerns regarding the real or proposed budget cuts. And in talking with the school leadership organization prior to the meeting, it became apparent that the majority of the student body is not well-informed or clear on the proposed cuts. After discussing with teachers and administrators, it was clear that even they were uncertain, and this is a reflection of the lack of transparency amidst the Newark Public Schools bureaucracy. And amidst, in regards to our school, in early September, our principal understood that she needed to potentially cut two-hundred thousand from our annual budget, and there are similar six-digit figure cuts rumored to have been proposed for other high schools in the district, some even larger than the proposed cuts at Science and rumored to be double. Beyond the figures, however, we can observe the qualitative results. And for one, we immediately saw that clubs and after-school tutoring were not beginning as usual. And while we now know that these cuts are mostly not happening, the rumor of these cuts clearly affected our access to after-school activities. JV coaches stopped working, math tutoring in the cafeteria never started, and some clubs canceled their first meetings. As president of the SLO, the club most concerned with the politics surrounding the school, I'm here to voice the sentiment of the student body against these or any cuts. Even in the classroom, we can note the lack of supplies like printer paper or even textbooks. Many have been forced to buy books out of pocket to supplement and follow the curriculum. Even more selective programs like IB and AP are suffering from a lack of supplies. And part of this is not because there's a shortage, but because the classrooms are overcrowded. All this is to say that for proposed cuts, the effects were very real. And while we now know that these are mostly not happening, just the uncertainty surrounding them was felt by students, teachers, and administrators in our school. Proposing cuts then leaving weeks of uncertainty is not the best way to support our students and teachers. Is that?
You have one minute left.
Okay, on behalf of the student body, I would ask that the board and the superintendent understand that all clubs matter to the students who are in them, and we ask that you fund all clubs equally and that all schools throughout the district are funded fully and equitably. We thank the community members in the audience and the parents who are supportive of our needs, but in response, we, the students, have a proposal of our own. We ask that you really prioritize the student interest. On paper and in words, of course, you say this and you promise this, but actions speak louder than words, and your actions show that you do not really prioritize the student interest. I would like to thank you for your time and implore you to follow through with our proposal rather than yours. Thank you.
Next we have Jordan Roper.
Excuse me, may I just ask, sir, would you please make sure that I have the proposal and so that I can have a chance to review it? I'd be greatly grateful for that. Thank you.
Thanks. Next we have Jordan Roper.
Good evening, everyone. Vice Board Members and Superintendent Surf, my name is Jordan Roper, and I am an eighth grade student at American History High School. Today I am here to talk to you about the good and bad things that happened to me at American History High School. Last year, I decided to go to American History High School because I thought it was a family-oriented family, a safe place for students to learn, grow, and be successful if you earn it. That was not the case last year. What I learned mostly from some of the schools is that they wanted me to be a failure, and I'm illiterate, ignorant, amongst others, that wasn't nice. Last year, on September the ninth, my math teacher told me it made difference, it didn't make a difference as I passed his half. He was gonna fail me anyway because he talked to some of the teachers at Alexander Street School. These are some of the same teachers who put an anonymous letter in my book bag asking my father not to allow me to testify and do I know if I'm safe in school. Another teacher heard the conversation and reported it to the administration, and nothing was done about it. The same teacher was allowed to follow me in hallways, told another teacher not to go, not allow me to go to nurse when my tooth was broken, which caused me a great deal of pain. The same teacher told other teachers not to turn over folders to my family, not to show up at the SST meetings, and not to do parent-teacher conference with my father. What I'm saying to you may seem like I'm exaggerating, but I'm telling you the truth, and it has been documented by my parents. The teacher did things to me to make me angry, then reported to the principal that I'm defiant. They didn't tell the principal they were putting their hands in my face, glaring books on my desk, and blatantly being disrespectful. I thought since they weren't going to change, that I could be as mean and nasty as they could. One of my fellow students told me I should fight fire with fire. I told my father what the student said, and my father said, "I'm not a forest ranger, I'm a student. I should not fight fire with fire, you should fight fire with water." Superintendent Surf, on June seventeenth, I told the main office there was no coverage in the gym around ten oh five. I went back in the main office and told there was nobody in the gym, and they said they were sending coverage. I went back in the gym, I sat down, a few minutes later, I was struck on the right side of my face with a long, heavy pipe because two students were throwing pipes at each other, and no doubt was still present in the gym. I ended up having plastic surgery because someone decided not to be accountable and do their job. This incident caused me a great deal of pain, and I still have problems dealing with it every time I step in the gym. This year, I have decided not to let nothing get me down. I'm trying not to respond to negative comments or those who decide they have the powers to disrespect me because they are teachers. I still have teachers losing paperwork and not giving the test the way they're supposed to find out my true grade. I'm asking the district to oversee all of my folders to make sure none of my folders get lost this year or disregarded. Furthermore, two weeks ago, a lady told one of her students to approach me, and he threatened to smack me. Why? It's because he was one of a part of the group who wanted me to transfer out the building last year and give me problems this year. Although things may not be perfect, I have moved on, and I know that I'm a better person this year. All I'm looking for is an opportunity to be successful. I've been an honor student from first to fifth grade, I have brought my folders to show you my academic success, even though these people are trying to assassinate my character and sabotage my grades. But I know all things work together for my good as long as I stand on the truth. People want to give me grades without folders, documentations, or facts. That's not fair to me and my parents or the district. One of the greatest civil rights leaders of our era, quote Martin, Dr. Martin Luther King, said in one of his speeches, "All we want this nation to do is give out to what has been written." I quote, "All superintendent of all I want in Newark Public Schools to do is to live out what has been written, such as a grading policy and curriculum that is accuracy and is place. I appreciate the vice board and superintendent for listening to what I had to say. Thank you."
Thank you very much. Next we have Ms. Mathias. Ms. Mathias?
What's going on? I am nervous. Do you remember learning about in the common era in fifteen thirteen when Martin Luther penned a document attacking the Catholic Church's corrupted practice of seeking indulgence to absolve sin? There was a sufficient amount of conflict between Luther and the monarchy, but the main hurdle was that about eight years later, the peasants who are claimed to be the unlearned crafted a list of demands of what they wanted. Now that story sounds familiar, right? Hello, my name is Christine Mathias, I am a freshman attending American History High School located in Newark, as well as a current student who is struggling with the decisions of Newark Public Schools. I am here to make you second guess as to why you think budget cuts would benefit a struggling public school. I want you to think about it. Comparing the fifteen hundreds to two thousands, they are much similar. The monarchy would be the great and powerful state of New Jersey. The nobility is the Board of Education, and we, the students and parents of Newark, New Jersey, are being treated like the peasants. And years later, we, the students and parents, are coming to you with our list of demands. We demand certified teachers, we demand better and updated textbooks, we demand a more superior heating and cooling system, we demand a modernized and renovated school buildings. When going to school, a student should be able to be comfortable in a learning environment, but we're not. Without these, how do you expect children to do better and be better if the Board of Education cannot provide the basic needs of a student? The Youth Media Symposium wants to know.
Thank you very much. Next we have Ms. Robertson.
Albert Einstein once said, "The world will not be destroyed by those who do evil, but by those who watch them outdo anything." And by me standing here right now, I'm displaying to you that I will not be victimized by the ways of MPS in the state of New Jersey. Allow me to introduce myself. My name is Alexandria Robertson, I go to American History High School, and I'm a current freshman. I am part of the Youth Media Symposium, and I am also a student in an abandoned school system and feel imprisoned and cornered by my own education, and I should not feel that way. I'm tired of torn books, I'm tired of the useless ventilation systems, I'm tired of testing, I'm tired of not having a certified teacher, I'm tired of overcrowded classrooms. But most importantly, I'm tired of Newark Public School Board system not being up to standards and dysfunctional. Supply us with the right tools so we can be adequately prepared to complete the task at hand. We need governance back through the Q set. It's time to return our local control so that we can set our school system right. I hope that this plan that will be submitted November first by the state, to the state by the district, get us there. We have no more time to waste, it's time to govern ourselves.
Thank you very much. Next we have Ms. Perata. Vivian Perata?
Good evening, everyone, board members and superintendent. I'm Vivian Perata, Jr., from Berenger High School, and I'm also the head photographer of the Youth Media Symposium. There's a story I want to tell. About three years ago, a girl from the Dominican Republic traveled here to America to live a better life. She could not speak English, but her and her family were looking for something different, something new, a step farther in her education. She was excited about to start school in America, but her new school turned out to be one of the most neglected, disorganized, and looked down upon as a low-performing school in her new home, Newark, New Jersey. The school, Berenger High School, was being held together by the principal and administration, a school that wasn't full with opportunities or even resources. Compared to other high schools in her district, it was where students go to be forgotten. We made the news last year, not for our achievements, but because YMS did a video that showed our deadly struggles as students. But that didn't stop her. Now this girl is one of the best students in the school with the highest GPA, this being a current four-point-three, and she's also involved in a bunch of activities. This year, this year, her principal and teachers had many ideas for making the school better. But now, district schools have been affected by budget cuts. We already had very little, now we have to deal with even having less. Now imagine, imagine all the students that come here from other countries, or even the ones that are here already, trying to find better, better opportunities, better resources, a better quality of education. What are they going to find? Shouldn't every school, shouldn't every school in every neighborhood provide the same opportunities? Aren't all children important? We can all be better if we are provided with the things that we need. And by the way, that girl that I was talking about is standing in front of all of you right now, that's me. I'm inviting the board and superintendent to come and meet with YMS so we can work in work with us to restore the great things that we have lost and the great things that we never had. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Let me just say, I accept, let me just say, let me just say, that was a very moving observation, and I accept your invitation. So if you will let me know the details, I would love to come meet with you.
Next we have Ms. Madison Polly.
Good evening, my name is Madison Polly, I'm a junior at University High School, and I'm also a student advocate in the Youth Media Symposium. Today I will be speaking to you about the effects of budget cuts on our schools. Though the effects of the budget cuts appear to students subtly, they hit us hard. A total of fifteen million dollars was cut from the Newark Public Schools' budget. Principals made the final decision on what was cut, but the amount being cut from each school was not up to them. Some schools got less money than others. My principal, Regina Sharp, thought long and hard on what to cut from the school. She eventually cut the homework center, middle school debate team, athletic supplies, the academic sports coach, and more. I came to university in the seventh grade. As a middle school student, adjusting to a high school environment was difficult. The only familiar thing to me was debate. Debate helped me open up and allowed me to gain confidence by finding something that I'm good at. By cutting these activities, you are robbing students of the opportunity to develop public speaking and presentation skills, and you are also robbing them the opportunity to break out of their comfort zones. Give back funding and give back opportunities. By the end of this meeting, I hope you find ways to alleviate the financial burden put on Newark Public Schools and to improve our learning conditions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next we have Diamond Jones.
Sorry, may I ask the speaker, may I ask the speaker a quick question?
Ms. Polly?
Yes, I'm sorry. I have made a commitment to assure that debate teams are not cut, so I would like very much to hear the particulars from you. Would you, would you, would you please see, would you please make sure that I get a note from you with contact information through one of my colleagues here? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next we have Ms. Simon Jones. Next we have Ms. Diamond Jones.
There's gonna be two other students before Diamond. Good evening, my name is Alexis McCoy, I am a junior at University High School, and I am a student leader in the Youth Symposium, the Youth Media Symposium. I would like to ask the board some rhetorical questions. What do you think that Newark students are worth?
Excuse me, your name is not on the list.
But I signed up the same.
Can you please verify with Mr. Reed? Travis?
Hello, my name is Diamond Jones. I am a junior at University High School and also a member of YMS. These past two years of university have definitely been a journey for me. I believe that every eighth grader in middle school wants to be in a good school, or at least a quality school. I believe they all fantasize about what high school would be like, or at least what it used to be like. When you think of university, people usually think of the best. Honestly, I believe that once was, but not anymore. University is beginning to fall into the melting pot along with the rest of the failing schools in Newark. schools in Newark. The state has taken out true elective and replaced them with mandatory test-taking courses. Test results are becoming plaster on students' heads like barcoles. With failing test scores, few elective, and one Newark, we are no longer different from the rest of the schools. We are a part of the norm. We are becoming the same. One Newark is causing magnet schools to become indiscriminable from the comprehensive schools. We have also been faced with outrageous budget cuts. In University High School mission statement, it talks about striving to educate students to the fullest of their potential. But how can a school strive for something so beneficial to students without being provided with the necessary needs to accommodate the students? This year alone, there has been a huge lack of desks. Due to budget cuts, students are being forced to share desks and chairs. The school was also forced to cut the homework center in order to not terminate teachers. The homework club is beneficial to students. It gives them personal one-on-one time with teachers on the areas that they need most. Aside from budget cuts, the importance of uniforms has become toxic. When do uniforms supersede learning? I'm waiting. The schools are worrying more about whether students have on gray pants and a collared shirt than they are about the quality of education. I have been placed in less attention numerous times because I had on the right colored pants but the wrong material, or a white shirt but no collar. I feel as though the district needs to get their priorities straight. Students come first. Above everything, students come first. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Diamond. Next, we have Janaya Jones. Next, we have Janaya Jones. Ms. Jones, Janaya Jones? Next, we have Gail Mohammed. Gail Mohammed?
Good afternoon, advisory board and superintendent. I wouldn't think that I would have to be after this mic, after retiring after 30 years, and still hear the same old song, "Budget Cuts." But when we do the budget cuts, it fails our children because they're not getting the right education, and also, it takes away jobs from the little people because you don't cut the budget from the top, you cut it from the bottom. But I'm here today to talk about food service workers. I'm talking about food service workers because we're short of staff in our cafeterias, where I walk into cafeteria and I see teachers, principals, and aides serving our children. That's a no-no because there's a border health issue. Because if a worker was short of help, and they would ask an aide to come in and help them serve, we'd be sitting at the table with five days of suspension. When is going to stop? Because we can't go into the classroom and teach the teachers because we're not qualified to teach them, and they're not qualified to serve our students when it's short of staff. Budget cuts, I guess. And I'm also here to tell you that we're tired of being disrespectful by management. That has to stop. Where you want respect, you give respect. And that's how it's going to go in the food service department. I might go downtown tomorrow and be leached out, but I'm ready for it. Because I'm not going to walk, I'm talking about me, Mr. Surf, I'm not going to walk in another one of your schools where principals put their hands on me, or walk on two-seater street and be disrespected again. You want respect from me? Then you give me respect. Because you know what? If that was me, I would have been cuffed with the police. I would have been cuffed with the police. So, Mr. Surf, I'm asking you to sit down and tell your staff that's sitting on that stage to respect us all. Because I am fed up and I'm tired. And yes, I'm angry, not when I go in and somebody throw a damn bottle at me, and I'm finished.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mohammed. Next, we have Annette Austin. Next, we have Annette Austin. Ms. Austin?
First of all, I want to say I am so proud of the students that spoke here tonight. We teach our children to think the evidence is before you. My name is Annette Austin. I'm a teacher in the Newark Public School System, vice president of the Newark Teachers' Association. Tom Moran, in the recent Star Ledger article, talked about some, quote, "fundamental truths" in his article that were not necessarily very true or incorrect context. Let's talk about fundamental truths. One in three Newark students in 2015 already go to a charter school. The expansion of charters by way of the old Star Ledger building, the move toward Avon and Peschan becoming charters is part of a design to move that one-third to two-thirds or more. At that point, you might as well close all the schools and just make it like New Orleans because too many parents have drunk the Kool-Aid and truly believe they are getting more from charter schools when in fact, they are really getting less. And they won't realize it until it's just too late, if it's not too late already. Let's look at the fact that most charter schools are not equipped to deal with special needs students, so that students are usually sent back to district schools just before testing, yes, true, because I'm a teacher and I get them, after they have exasperated the parents and finally admit that they are not equipped to handle them or threaten their child with retention. Then, there is the fact that most charters are locked up as tight as a drum after 4:00 P.M. Why? Because most, if any, don't have any real extracurricular activities. No athletic programs, no debate teams, choirs, bands, or clubs of any sort. Those are the things that other districts that refuse to have charters in their districts have. And those are the students that our charter students will be competing against. The charter school students who will only be able to boast scores higher than the other school students in the district. When colleges are looking at well-rounded students, those extracurricular activities often are what give our students an edge. By the time charter parents realize this and start demanding this, charters will want to start charging you for it. So, what happens when all the schools are charter? Yay, right? Well, let's look at Louisiana. New Orleans closed its last traditional school, public school, last year. They have a totally charter and privatized system. Better, right? Wrong. Out of 76 schools in disadvantaged neighborhoods, only four have an A rating, 10 have a B, and the rest are below level with 32 of the schools scoring Ds and Fs. So, they're not as good, and they don't even have the extracurricular activities that the traditional schools had. That looks like less to me, not more. See, I'm running out of time. And let's talk about the real reason that corporations and hedge funders love charters.
Ms. Austin?
Thank you very much.
Okay, next time, that would have to be part two.
I would like to allow the two students that didn't have the opportunity to speak to come to the mic and say something.
Thank you for letting me speak. Good evening. My name is Alexis McCoy. I am a junior at University High School. I'm a junior at University High School, and I am a student leader in the Youth Media Symposium. I would like to ask the board a few rhetorical questions. What do you think Newark students are worth? Do you believe that we are worth an excellent education? Do you think that we should have the same opportunities as a charter school or a suburban school? What do you think that we are worth? Newark students are starting to doubt that the Newark Public Schools District and the state care about the future of Newark schools and those of us who choose to attend them. My principal should not have to decide whether to cut a teacher or a homework center, both of which are essential to our education. Yet, she had to. Our homework center at University High School is gone. I, as the Secretary of the National Honor Society, must complete 20 hours of tutoring each year. Without the homework center, finding students to tutor is difficult. The center provided a critical resource that made the difference. University High School is not the only school that is facing these problems. Every Newark public school had to sacrifice something that would have contributed to their students' education. Why are we always being asked to sacrifice? This is unfair. It is not the school's fault that there is a budget gap. It is not the teacher's fault, nor is it the students' fault. Give us our money back so that the principals can fund the programs like the homework centers at university that benefit their students the most. Or are we not worth it?
Thank you very much. The next student, please.
Thank you for giving me the chance to speak.
You're welcome.
Good night. My name is Derek Cook. I attend University High School. I am also part of Youth Media Symposium. Today, I'll be talking about budget cuts. Budget cuts has deeply affected me and my school. Resources are limited, such as copy paper, for teachers to print assignments. The textbooks we have at our school are currently rundown and old. Some are dated back to the early 2000s. There are also a lack of seats for all students. My classmates and I have to sit on the floor or on a desk instead of a chair when classrooms are overcrowded. Moreover, budget cuts has taken my after-school programs away from me and my classmates. Many of the programs has been canceled due to a lack of funds to the school. The homework center has been a place where students can go and get homework done on the computer if they didn't have one at home, or if they needed help in a certain subject. It's gone. There's also a discontinu of supplies for the athletes at University High School. How can athletes play without the proper equipment they need to make them better at what they like to do? Cutting after-school programs doesn't allow students to try new things. For example, if they cut bowling from my school, some students wouldn't have the chance to become successful in that sport. You shouldn't have the right to take away things that make us interested in school. Academic shouldn't be the only thing a school can offer. Students need to be engaged both academically and non-academically. My education is valuable to me, and it's something I hold dear to me. It's something that will help me in the long run. But with all the budget cuts that have taken place, it is hard for me to get the education I require to be successful in the future. So, my question for those who do the budget cuts, whether it's the school, the board, or even the governor, would you want this for your child?
Thank you very much. Next, we have John Abigon.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I do not believe that I have nine minutes and 59 seconds. I think it's like four or five, but play that number straight in box. The Newark Teachers Union has been waiting to see if Chris Surf would reverse any of the bad decisions made by his predecessor, the now-discredited Cami Anderson. Now that the veil of legitimacy has been lifted off of the education reform for profit movement, he's had the perfect opportunity to undo the harm education reform has caused and continues to cause this district. Without exception, our traditional schools, as neglected as they are, still outperform any of the district's renewed schools. You'd even have to close one of them. You have cut central office staff to a skeletal crew at best for budgetary costs, but still find money to hire two new assistants. The funneling of millions of dollars earmarked for students into the hands of politically-connected quack reformers is costing New Jersey taxpayers millions of dollars. This payola is within the per pupil spending budget line, but never gets to the students. You never correct that publicly, and it's your job to correct any types of misperceptions of that nature. What shared blame do we have? And we keep hearing this over and over again, that there's a shared blame between what happened in the past four years and what happened with Cami Anderson's administration, as if this community had anything to do with it. What shared blame do we have with the decisions to direct millions of dollars to friends of Cami and Vanessa's? Or Tracy Breslin's? Remember her? She bounced out of here, pregnant and happy, to her little crib in Brooklyn with $100 million, no, not $100 million, $1 million for her turnaround for children group. Another half a million for Visera LLC, Tracy's girlfriend's company. The new teacher project, Excellent Education for Everyone. Michelle Ree, another discredited reformer, New Jersey School Choice Company. Where is your corrective action plan? It shouldn't be written by you. It should be written by the people in this audience. It should be written by the children in this audience, the students, the parents, the teachers, the aides, and the clerks. CUSAC, we've told this board time and time again, you need to stop playing the CUSAC joke of a game designed by people to disrepute you. You're being judged for decisions and actions that you're not responsible for. They're responsible for it. This whole cadre, starting with Vanessa Rodriguez and company, all of these reformers. They make those decisions, you're graded for them, and you sit there and take it. As a group, you should be down at the next state board of ed meeting, moving some furniture up in there. It's a joke. And I'm tired of having to sit here and listen as you people go through the, let's go through the CUSAC. Where are we now with CUSAC? I got a nice word for CUSAC, but there are children in the room in this town. The Newark Educational Success Board, another joke. It's controlled by people with money, controlled by people that don't look anything like this audience, taking their living time, telling us that in 2016, we may have a plan to produce and present to the Newark public. In 2016, they may present us a plan that says in another three years, meaning 2019, we'll have local control. And yet, the politicians in this town, some of them flush with money from Shavar Jeffrey, who just picked up a $225 million check for his Democrats for Education Reform. Meanwhile, the students will attest, upwards of 200 teachers are teaching outside of their certification. They didn't place themselves there. The advisory board didn't place them there. They're placed there by quacks like Vanessa Rodriguez. The district requested, and the same is going to be said about special education, the district requested and receives a waiver from certain requirements with the agreement that they will do equal or better than the federal or state government. The implementation of EZIEP will be a fiasco, a fiasco of morally reprehensible design. We're just waiting for it to roll out. EZIEP is easy individual education program, like the child is a calf. Just bring it to any teacher, a second-year teacher, don't know the difference between physically handicapped and behavioral, and they're going to be making EZIEP decisions on your children. You know, we all want the best possible results for our children and our education system that works for all of Newark students. However, right now, we're not confident that this administration has the ability or the willingness to do it, as long as you continue to surround yourself with this reform ilk.
Thank you very much, Mr. Abigon. Next, we have Veronica Branch.
Ladies and gentlemen, please refrain from making personally-directed statements.
Are we ready?
Yes.
Veronica Branch, 121 Leslie. First, let me say, Marquise, I commend you on standing up for the Newark Public School kids at the planning board meeting. Rashan Hassan for the Newark Public School kids, whoever back you got, I feel sorry for them. So, first, we want to say, where's the finance pages for this booklet? Where's the money that you're giving, the $300 million that you're giving to charter? We need to see those finance pages. First of all, Hawthorne, Carver, Bruce Street, Avon, and Peschan, what's the status? We said no more school closures, but yet, you have all these schools designated to turn over to charter. What do you think these kids are going to go to? Hawthorne Avenue? We still have substitutes, and everybody don't want charter. Hawthorne Avenue, we still have substitutes, and everybody don't want Charter. We still have substitutes in Hawthorne Avenue. We had substitutes since the beginning of the school year. When is it going to change? We need to know the status of all these schools. Also, the class size at Carver, thirty kids in the class, seven of them IEP, three aides, and when one teacher gets them, all the aides on lunch. So we need that address. And also the substitutes in, in Carver, and the substitutes in Hawthorne Avenue, and the substitutes right here in university. How long you keeping them? They can't grade no kids? So when are you going to get rid of them and get real teachers in here? You pushed so many of our good teachers out of the district to bring in these uncertified teachers that the Charter house, and we don't have no teachers to teach our kids. We still waiting on the music teacher at Hawthorne Avenue. When you gonna get it? I know you was there today because my son said he saw you. So I don't know whatever y'all was talking about or discussing, trying to change Hawthorne over to the Charter. We not having that. Hawthorne is staying Hawthorne. Where do you think these kids are going to go? Everybody is tired of traveling around the district, South Ward to East Ward to North Ward. That's not what we signed up for. We signed up to go to school in the community that we live in. Now you already shut us out of Bogart and sent these kids all over the district. We not doing that again. We not gonna every year, go here, they closed this school, go here, they closed this school. And like the young woman said, New Orleans Charter District ranked sixty-seven. Sixty-seven. So if that's what you want, we don't want that. We want traditional public schools, and we want to fund it correctly.
Thank you very much, Ms. Branch. Next we have Ms. Donna Jackson.
Good morning. Let the games begin. Donna Jackson, 128 Smith Street. I guess we're gonna amp up this charter public fight again in our North Public School meetings. Just one word of advice to my fellow charter school parents. You have a board, go to your own meeting, stop coming to ours, start in trouble. Dare you to do that. This is a North Public School meeting. We deal with North Public School issues, and the only thing you get from North Public Schools is money. I would like you to go meet with your hierarchy, who are all Caucasian men, who dictate what happens at your school buildings. When we come to these meetings, we're fighting for our children. If you want to help us fight for our children, come on. But if you don't, well, I dare to see you because I ain't seen it yet. Y'all been talking for five years that y'all gonna come to this mic and help us fight for our public school kids. I dare y'all to stop fighting for all the kids. Y'all wear that shirt, but y'all don't represent what's on the back of it. It ain't about all kids with you. So I'm gonna, uh, that, excuse me? My nephew goes to Lincoln. My kid is grown.
Ms. Jackson, please continue with your speech. Ms. Jackson, please continue with your speech.
It's fine. It's okay. It's all right. I don't have a problem. It's all right. It's okay.
Please continue. Do not entertain them.
I will continue. Denise, I'm good.
Ms. Jackson, Ms. Cole. Ms. Cole.
I'm good. I'm good.
Ms. Okay, Ms. Jackson is willing to speak. I, I just told her, Ms. Cole.
I'm good.
All right, Ms. Cole. Ms. Jackson, please continue.
You know, right now in North Public Schools, we haven't had a facility fixed in five years. And our children have to walk past schools that are being renovated, schools that are being built. And if we are all on the same page, then this is what we should be talking about. Not building brand-new stuff across the street from a public school that our children have to look at. Not doing what we did inside of Carver, renovating the third floor and saying, "To hell with the kids on the first and the second floor." It's about all the kids. If it's about all the kids, then that's what it should be about. When they deliver the air conditioner.
Ma'am, in the red. Ma'am, in the red.
Like really?
That's a warning.
Seriously?
That's a warning.
Okay. It's okay.
Order. Order, Ms. Jackson.
And I want the rest of us to understand, this is deliberate. And y'all better understand, this is deliberate. And we all pay taxes here, but the unfortunate piece is when you have a governor that instructs the superintendent to take seventy million dollars and give it to Charter School only, while he cuts budgets over and over and over again, it's wrong. That's not for all the kids. So that's what happened this year. If you listen to Mr. Surf's testimony at the New Jersey State Board meeting last week, he told it. So if y'all so on for all board, then let's put that seventy million dollars back where it was and let it return to take care of our children. The last comment is this. Our special needs department in all areas. Now I'm talking about Charter and public together. They ain't servicing the kids there, and we have done a good job under your direction at the state, Mr. Surf, in destroying the North Public Schools A1 Special Ed Department that we had, under your direction. And what's happening now is, everybody jumped on board because they want the money, but everybody set mainstream the kids. Well, what happens when you mainstream BD, multiple disabled, medically disabled kids, and the same thing, and then you tell a classroom teacher, "Take these thirty kids," and I don't care what school it is. And they don't have the equipment for that, we're failing all of those children. Because the kids in the classroom that were regular ed, they're gonna be special ed too, because now the teacher's focus is on all of them. So this is what I'm saying. The fight and the game has begun. That's fine. But at the end of the day, right now, in North Public Schools, the level, the playing field needs to be leveled. And if you're gonna give it on one side, you have to give it on the other. And if you're not gonna do that, Mr. Surf, as your predecessor didn't do, then we're gonna have to ask for you to leave too. I don't care what politician. I hear you, Ariana. I don't care what politician brought you here. I don't care what the mayor, the council, or the governor says. At the end of the day now, you saw the increased participation in there today. We will pack every meeting from now to June until you leave if you don't give us everything we need. Because our kids deserve to have everything that those kids have.
Ms. Jackson, thank you very much. Next we have Mr. Genoit.
Good evening, members of the board, fellow University High School alumni. My, um, some of the students who spoke tonight, I'd like to commend them for their participation and for their Huts fund and coming out tonight. I wish I had that courage when I was their age. I have commentary on several areas. One, I'd like to gravely disagree with Donna Jackson tonight on the grounds that every student's education matters. And I'd like to say to Donna Jackson and to the entire community assembled here tonight that every student, every student has the opportunity to a quality, thorough, and efficient education by New Jersey constitutional law. And so how they choose to get it is their parents' decision. But I stand to you proudly as a, as a graduate of University High School, and honorable graduate of University High School, and also of several graduate institutions with my Master of Arts degree in education at the elementary level and secondary level, and currently being chased away from the public schools as a charter school teacher. And I just want to tell you that, uh, I've worked with North Public Schools kids. I am a North Public Schools graduate.
Speak to the board, sir.
And I'd like to let the board know, Mr. Lewis, who is a proponent of Baraka's plan to eliminate charter schools, that, uh, that I once was a certified teacher in the North Public Schools district. And the grave nature of politics that is taking place in the classroom has taken good teachers like myself and driven us away because we are concerned about teaching only. We don't care about the politics. We want to differentiate instruction. We want to lead special ed kids back into the least restrictive environment. We want to have parents coming in volunteering and doing so with an open heart and receptive void of politics. This is why we left, and we're not returning. How many of you knew? So, uh, you know, get, you know, cut my paycheck, you know, cut my salary, but I understand that I'm still reaching children, and I'm sending children to Harvard, not to public education institution like William Patterson, where I graduated from. I, we need them go to Harvard. We need them to go to Harvard so they can return here and do, and do what the public school says charter schools can't do. So guess what? I, I hear you. I hear you, but guess what? This is my time. This is my time.
Ms. Cole? Ms. Cole, thank you.
Can you stop my time?
Order, order, let Mr. Jamaris speak.
Can you stop my time, please?
Mr. Jamaris, please continue.
Your time is up.
My time is not up, Mr. Lewis. You better readjust your clock, sir, before I readjust my vote. Understand it.
And Mr. Jamaris, thank you. Next, our next speaker?
No, my time is not up. She interrupted.
Your time is up.
I thank you, members of the community, for your time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Mr. Darren Martin.
Thank you, Mr. G.
Mr. Martin? Mr. Order, let Mr. Martin speak. Order. Order. Mr. Martin, are you ready?
I'm ready.
May you please allow Mr. Martin to speak?
All right.
Order. Silence in the room.
Darren Martin, 107 Ivy Street, president of the PTO at Ivy Hill Elementary School, and a board member for Pulse Parents Unified for Local School Education.
May you please allow Mr. Martin to speak? Thank you.
All right, um, I want to say, guys, that this is really not a public against charter fight, so we don't need to start that, guys. We are all together in the same city. This is a fight about equity from our standpoint. We just want everybody to get the same exact thing. So although you spoke eloquently, brother, that was good. You got some cheers and some hand claps, that's nice. But at the end of the day, we still have to educate all the kids in the city, and that's what it comes down to. So, let me talk about the planning board vote real quick. I got a question. Who appointed the people on the planning board? And if they voted against the people and the voters in the city, why are they still on the board? Then there was two abstained votes, which was interesting. Very interesting. That you would abstain, you gotta take, you gotta go to the left or right. You can't be in the middle on an issue like this. You gotta stand on one side. The Newark community needs to band together and stop this, what's gonna happen at the Star Ledger Building. It has to be, Newark has to get back to Brick City, guys. We have to, if you have to lay down and do some civil disobedience, you cannot let them take over that building, guys. It has to be a fight. More people have to come out and get serious about this fight. Otherwise, they're gonna take over the whole city, and it's gonna look like New Orleans, as you heard some speakers say earlier. Then the other question is, did they get a CO for the building yet? I guess that remains to be seen, or somebody will tell me about that. Now, charter school people are being told that this is about choice. If this was really about choice, really about choice, then how do you close all of the neighborhood schools and tell our kids they have to go to this school or that school? That's not choice. That's not choice. Choice is when you make a decision to send your kid where you want to send your kid, not when they close all of your schools and then say you have to go to only this one, this one, or this one. So that's not choice. So you guys need to stop floating that word around, because that's not true. This is about equity. Now, sir, I asked you when you first came here, what's gonna be different between you and Cami? The only difference is, really, that I could see, you're a white man and she's a white woman, because it's the same philosophy. Nothing different. Nothing has changed at all. It's the same exact flawed philosophy. You, the only difference is that you come out and talk to people, you do it a little nicer. She has twenty guards around her. You don't have many guards around you. That's a good thing, but same philosophy. Now, let me just talk about this high-stakes testing real quick. We need to make sure that we refuse the test. Don't let them bamboozle you with numbers. I want to finish.
Mr. Martin?
I want to finish, Madalchim. Don't let them bamboozle you with the numbers, and because President Obama now said shave it down. He was part of the problem as well, because he helped let this thing happen. I know we all love our president. I love him too, but he was bad, he was wrong on this decision. When he put Arnie Dum Dum in there.
Mr. Martin, please wrap up.
That's the problem. Yeah, I know my time is up. Now, I was nice to you guys. Don't be mean to me now.
Next speaker, Ms. Kathleen Witcher.
Kathleen Witcher, AD Johnson Avenue. Two questions from the South Side Malcolm X Shabazz High School Alumni Association. The first one regards the cut to the school budget. In three years, of course, has amounted to 1.8 million dollars, resulting in no auto shop, no wood shop, no foods, no clothing and design, no JROTC, plus cuts to the teaching staff. And although we have a college success center at the school at this time, there are many, many concerns that we have, including renovations that are necessary at the school. When will this happen? And of course, we feel negated because the information given by one Newark Enrolls indicated we had a .3 graduation rate, which in fact was 61% graduation rate not reported. The correction was made to Superintendent Anderson, but not corrected on the NPS website and information. We also are talking about the Future Project. No books, no grades, no tests. We'd like to know the exact amount spent at the five sites for the Future Project, where the amounts of money come from. To date, it spells privatization. We are a public school. We intend to continue as a public school, providing for all the children at Malcolm X Shabazz High School and all the other schools. Also, from the NAACP Education Committee statewide, two observations. Number one, that we would like to see a reporting out on the adherence to the curriculum of New Jersey Amistad by all schools. This is a mandate for K to 12. And secondly, that we would like to know the exact number of students still not placed in a school or in a classroom. There are some whole families who went to the success site over at West Kenny Street and were turned away. Some who were told, "No more preschool slots. Come back next year." And others who were told, "No placement at the schools of their choice," which happened to be our neighborhood schools, which are still open. We wondered why the message was given that they could not be enrolled at such schools as Malcolm X Shabazz High School. Last, I would say, we are going to be discussing local control and all of its parameters on November 21st, when we have Empower Your PTA. We invite all parents to Marion A. Bolden Center, 230 Broadway. That is Saturday, November 21st, 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., hosted by the New Jersey PTA and the Essex County Council PTA.
Thank you very much, Ms. Witcher. Next we have Ms. Colinda Jackson. Colinda Jackson? Kalinda Jackson? Not, not here. Next, we have Natasha Eliezer. Natasha Eliezer.
Good afternoon, board members.
Good afternoon. Good evening.
And the public, good evening. Lucius Jones, 224 Richland Terrace. And my concern, very simply, is the meaning of, of what's happening to children. We talk about pedagogy, differentiating instruction, and what that really means in this district. See, because as we move this slogan around from good to great, see, the, the Constitution of the state of New Jersey never said anything about good or great. It only talked about thorough and efficient. Thorough is the complete regard for everything, not superficial or impartial. Efficient, mean maximum, uh, uh, maximum, uh, the maximum results. The maximum results, minimum waste or expense. The question is whether or not the state is meeting those regards, because that's by any, by all means, that's why the state came here in the first place. The circumstances that I have is this. It really all comes down to impact. I have nieces and nephew on one side, charter, niece and nephew on the right side, public. First and second grade, I saw them really neck and neck, my nieces. By third grade, I saw my niece that was in public school begin to drop off. The question is why? I didn't realize as much as I realize now, when I put all the effort into my daughter working really, really hard to get into, to university high school, and she's been here three years. And when you look at the type of issues that university high school is going through, a magnet school, but when you look at the graduation, the U.S. statistic on arts, on university high school, and you see it even marked, it's not even marked as a magnet school. So that's right there, says a lot. The problem that I'm having is that when we talk about rain, I mean, a roof that needs to be fixed, when we talking about books, the quality of teachers, all of the type of issues that are coming up in QSA. A lot of the same issues that we're talking about of happening, what's happening in the school, while we created a principal's learning institute. But is the principal learning institute efficient or thorough? Is it meeting the needs of Newark public school students? Or is it basically just superficial and partial? Mr. Surf, we have a real serious problem here in the district, because there is a disadvantage. There's a disadvantage among black students in the same district. So if we compare that to the white students of the suburbs or the white students of the South of 1960 or 1950 versus Brown versus the Board of Education, we were looking at white students that were much, much more ahead, further ahead than African-American students. But we are creating the same type of institution in New Jersey, in Newark today. We have one group that we talk about are the charters. We have another group that we talk about are the public. The issue here is that, and then we talk about the goal, reform. Well, reform means to do it again. You're not talking about transforming. You're talking about reforming, to do it again. So when we look at what's actually happening to our students and to our parents and to the teachers, what's the issue? We have reformed the schools, but we have not reformed the regulations and we have not reformed the statutes and we have not reformed the type of stuff that's going on in Trenton, because we all know the 18A, which is the statute for education in New Jersey, public schools have to live by the law of 18A. Now, Commissioner Surf, you said to some of your friends in Fort Lee that you don't even believe in some of the, uh, 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 legislation and regulations of the, uh, uh, of, 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 of the, of the state. You said that. You said a lot of it is a bunch of nonsense. But my question becomes now, when we talk about equal opportunity for all, because that's what it boils down to. Will my child in school A public or school A charter have an equal opportunity to a quality education? Or we will, or will we continue to cuss each other out, to fight over a seat in either of these schools? Because the issue becomes, the issue is not whether or not the public is better, the, the issue comes down is that the state is saving a lot of money.
Mr. Jones?
I'm wrapping it up. The state is saving a lot of money and they are causing havoc in the public education, whether it's charter, public, or other. And I'm saying to you, Mr. Surf, you hold the helm. You are the architect of a lot of this reform in the state of New Jersey. What do you intend to do to make this district whole and to hold, make sure that every single child, under your jurisdiction, receive a quality education? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jones.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Jones, Mr. Jones, uh, it's, it's, uh, Chris here, if I may, uh, quickly respond. First of all, I admire your words, uh, I admire your passion, and I fundamentally agree with a great deal of what you said. I would offer only, um, two observations, um, and then I would look forward to continuing the conversation, um, uh, at your, at your convenience. The first is, we have a profound question of equal opportunity, uh, in this city. It should make us all weep, uh, it should make us recommit to a future where there is equality, uh, of educational, uh, opportunity, and there isn't. But I would strongly suggest that you at least consider the following possibility. That lack of equality, that lack of equal opportunity does not involve pitting one kind of school against the other. It involves righting the wrong of not assuring every child, as you say, a thorough and efficient education that enables them to move forward, uh, into life successfully. I would also say to you that the issue of how a school comes into being, as opposed to whether every school has a level playing field upon which to work, is where we share a lot of common ground. You are right that I have said, publicly say and say again, there are burdens placed on traditional public schools here, traditional public schools in this state that are not shared by charter schools. There are burdens of regulation, there are burdens of compliance, there are burdens, uh, required, uh, uh, to assure that in some occasions, the interests of adults are put higher than the interests of children. All of that is true. All of that is true, and shame on us. Shame on our legislature and shame on us for tolerating that. But the answer, sir, in my humble judgment, is not to level the playing field by knocking one group down. The answer, sir, in my judgment, is by elevating the other group. And by giving every school an equal opportunity to build a culture of achievement in which teacher and staff and principal and vice principal alike are aligned around a common goal of educating every child successfully. That's very hard to do in many of our traditional public schools. It is very, very, very hard when, although public schools, traditional public schools actually get more money per pupil than charter schools do, and money for facilities that charter schools don't, when the principal of traditional charter schools lacks the discretion to spend that money as effectively as she or he believes that they can to get common results. But again, the issue is not, uh, that we disagree that there is not a fundamental inequity in our system, but it is not between traditional schools and charter schools, and if there is, we need to elevate traditional schools. It is between what's going on in cities and communities like this and cities and communities that don't look like this. That is the inequity. It is the concentration of educational, um, concerns in, uh, certain communities, and I believe that has to end, and I share your goal, and I share your vision, and when we have the time, when we have the time to talk more thoroughly, I would be delighted to tell you what, um, I propose to do about that. Thank you very much, Mr. Jones. I admire you very much.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, he, he stopped me. My, my point, he, he, he stopped me, and I think I should have opportunity to respond. And my, my, my response, very simply, is this.
Mr. Jones, your time is up.
No, I understand that, but I, I'm asking, to courtesy of having the opportunity briefly to respond. That, the briefly to respond.
Yes, sir. Well, I, I would appreciate your response. Thank you, sir.
And it will be brief. That when, when you, uh, uh, Commissioner, when you, before you came here, there was not one charter school member all last year when Kami was here. There was not one.
I'm, I'm sorry, sir, one member?
There were not.
I didn't understand.
There were not. I, like I said to you, I have, I have family on one side and the other side. There was not. When you, when we create this type of chaos, you know, for them to go down to City Hall and fight for their right to open up a school, okay, that's an equal opportunity for everybody to get on the mic at 920 Broad Street. But when you come to the board meeting, the Newark Public School Board meeting, where we're here to understand what does QSA mean and to move towards local control, we feel that it's more disruptive when we create an atmosphere of division, when in Alabama, we all fought together to get on the same bus. Okay? The issue here really comes down to it is that the state is benefiting from all of this arguing and back and forth. The state of New Jersey is benefiting, whether they're paying $22,000 or $900, they're benefiting. And the circuit, and what we're trying to say to you, Commissioner, is this, that when we all created, Dr. Janey created the, uh, uh, the, uh, strategic plan, both charter schools and public schools sat at the table. Because no matter if it's a charter school child that shoots someone on the street or it's a public school style, just shoot someone in the street, the issue is not what school they came from, the issue is that it was a child that did it. And so I'm saying to you that this European, European method of telling us in our community how we should treat our kids based on their history is wrong. White folks cannot come to this district and tell us that we are second-class citizens and we don't have a right to sit at the table. That is the problem. That is the major, major problem.
Okay, Mr. Jones, thank you.
Okay? I, I'm finishing up. That, that is, that has become the only problem that we have here. The goal here of this district is to unify this district and unify this district without interference from people that don't live here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Next, we have Ms. Chulisa Vazquez.
Chulisa Vazquez? I'm very upset with the Newark Public School and the district. Christopher Surf, I had my daughter in this school and I had to transfer her out last week because they're not doing their job. Okay? This is supposed to be a magnet school. A magnet school shouldn't have lots of substitute teacher. I've been having a headache last, since last year with this school. My daughter, I had to transfer out, this is one of the reasons, because of family.
Could you say what, could you say what school it is? I didn't hear.
University High School, this school right here.
Thank you.
She's been transferred out, and this is the reason why. Chulisa Vazquez, Littleton Avenue. She has classes that she had last year that were not taught, because she has substitute teachers. She's getting it, they were getting them this year. How are you gonna get my daughter algebra II if she was not taught algebra I? There, of course, she's gonna fail it. I come in here, supposedly the counselor that, she says she was no longer my daughter's counselor anymore, but you stopped me for the whole summer. Wanted to transfer my daughter out, and I told her, no, I want my daughter to graduate from this high school. She wanted my daughter to go to an LCA program where we're 19 and 20-year-olds, graduate in one year? No, I want my daughter to graduate in class of 2017, when she's supposed to graduate it. I go down to the One North So-Call enrollment, So-Call that parents had choice, they gave me two choices, West Side and Bannier Academy. I didn't have choice to pick where my daughter had to go, so I had to put her in Bannier Academy. You think I'm happy about that? No. When I went over there with my paperwork, you know what they said? You came from university high school? You came from a magnet school? That was like, that's a disgrace. How could you come from a good school and come to a Bannier Academy? That's how upset I am. To Bannier Academy, where you know we have it still difficult over there, because we've been talking about this school since last year. Then again, we got Candice Street School, that I keep telling you about this principal. I don't know, people, we waking up, we waiting for him to bring our school down, because if you look online, we talk about he's building charter school in there. The only one thing that I say that did good this year is called Class Dojo, where parents could look online on their cellphone and see how the kids are doing, but that, I'm telling you, I want that principal removed from Candice Street School, point blank. And y'all need an exterminator, and if y'all wanna show you pictures, we got vultures in that school. We got pre-K babies that sleep at nighttime. So could we send an exterminator to that school? Every, every time we come to these meetings, we argue and we talk about how, how we want Newark Public Schools to succeed, but that this group, and Surf, you could tell Governor Christie that we need a better superintendent, because you need to go. We need local control of our school and we need the municipality to stop the charter school, stop giving the money to them, and stop shortcording our children.
Ms. Vazquez, thank you very much. And next, we have Ms. Deborah Smith Gregory. Ms. Deborah Smith Gregory?
Deborah Smith Gregory, president of Newark Branch NAACP. It is very disheartening to sit here and to hear what is happening once again in our community. Superintendent Surf, for the last three, four years, this is what has been happening. You hear the students, and this is not the same group of students, this is another group of students, that are talking about the conditions that this budget deficit has, and you hear this pitting going, as you say, pitting going back and forth, but the, the point of the matter is, is that if you have, say, um, a school like Kip, New Jersey, opening up six schools, then that means that the public money will be transferred over to those schools or parts of public money. And so then what happens is, you have this situation in the public schools where, um, there are a lot of subs, there are crowded classrooms because of layoffs, stripped down, uh, resources. There was something that you said just, um, a few minutes ago about principals lacking the discretion in their spending, but they really don't have any discretion in their spending because they're, they're, they're white. because they're wiped down to the bare bones. You hear this. And then you hear the back and forth with the charter parents who have come, as people have said, into a meeting about Newark Public Schools. And the point of the matter is, the point of the matter is, you hear that? Okay? So just so you're aware, that this was not just about traditional public school parents calling out and expressing themselves. That's not what this was about at this particular meeting. So you can't, you need to be aware of that. I've been sitting in the back and I hear, I've been hearing all the commentating and the hollering that's been going on to you. And our community cannot afford this. I live three blocks from here. And what Lucius Jones said about the kids, they're all our kids. This is a problem. And then when you have, you have not yet shown any kind of willingness to roll back any of the destruction of the previous superintendent. At the business meeting last week, I mentioned that there is a third grader who has not been enrolled in school because the parent keeps going to the One Newark Enrollment Center, whatever you want to call it. They told the child, child's mother, that the seat over at Chancellor, they lost it for whatever reason, instead of rolling up. And that the child wanted to go to Brick, which is currently a public charter school, but cannot go to Brick because no school, no principal can decide who comes and who goes. It's all funneled through that One Newark. So then the question becomes, what are you willing to do to roll back some of the destruction? That is the thing that will at least allow the community to have a sense of you are really working on the side of all children.
So thank you very much. May I just ask again, Ms. Gregory? I appreciate your comments, Ms. Gregory. Thank you. Would you, if, show on me if I lost it. But would you please tell me the name of that child? I think this came up at the last meeting.
I will not tell you publicly the name of the child.
No, ma'am. I understand.
I already gave the name of the child to your people, so they know.
Thank you very much for doing that. Could I make sure that one of my colleagues? And again, if it's us, it's something we will.
But see, but see the.
No, may I also, I'm sorry. I did not mean to cut you off, ma'am.
Superintendent Surf, so this one child is indicative of many children. And so what's been happening, Superintendent? What's been happening is that as we feed the information to you, those individual children do get taken care of. But there are so many more.
So let me just say thank you for feeding us that information. And would you please re-feed it to us in the case that? We can debate other larger issues, but I want to focus on this child's future. So could you please get us that information so we can? I would also like to respectfully say that Brick is not a, Avon or Peshawna are not charter schools.
No, I didn't say that.
Oh, did I misheard you?
Yes, you misunderstood what I said. What I said is that the child's mother wants them to go to Brick Academy, which is still a public school. It's not a charter school.
I misheard you.
Even though it's their intention to become one, right now, it's not. So she just wants all of her children to be together. And her third grader to be in school.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Ms. Christine Holloway.
I graduated from a Newark Public School. And I graduated from a Newark Public School. And I also went to college in Newark, New Jersey. My name is Ms. Christine Holloway. I live in Newark, New Jersey, West Ward. I want Newark Public Schools to return to local control. I think that teamwork can help because it shows accountability. Employees writing bias and gossip information about their coworker is not teamwork. They are committing defamation, meaning oral statements. Those are wrong statements. How can a child learn with that bad influence in the school system where adult education is being taken over? We should be able to accomplish with teamwork. Teamwork shows improvement in the test scores of the students, of the children. Teamwork shows a job well done toward education that can be used in life, towards a college education. This is why teamwork is why they have in-service. But a lot of time in the schools, during the in-service, administrations do not confront the employees what really matters in the school. They speak, in-service gives them the opportunity to speak their piece. All schools have administration. Texas, Florida, North Carolina. Newark schools need more teamwork. That will help us get our schools into local control. And I would like to know more about some of the schools in Newark, New Jersey, but I cannot talk about it right now. I would like to talk to, confront someone face to face that work at the Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Holloway. Next, we have Ms. Madeline Cedras. Madeline Cedras. Next, we have Alexis Rivera. Alexis Rivera. Deidra Johnson. Deidra Johnson.
Good evening. My name is Maureen Robinson, 428 Doyle Street, Elizabeth, New Jersey, Central High School. Mr. Surf, I've been speaking before this board for many years. And my permission to speak forms have never disappeared like it did last month when I spoke about the corrupt security system at Central High School. Mr. Surf, I would also like to have a printer that's connected to the web so I can research various websites for supplemental activities for my extremely low readers. I have made this request relentlessly over the past two years to no avail. The response was that the printers have been given to the charter schools and there are no more left for Central High School. Mr. Surf, I am also requesting that you have the powers that be in Central High School stop talking to grown adult professionals in a disrespectful and condescending manner like we are children. Please teach them some professional manners. Discrimination, treating people in an unfair manner, hatred, bigotry, and favoritism are ugly and hurtful irrespective of whom the perpetrator is. It is not fair for principals to buy into holding positions for their friends and/or favorites when there are veteran professionals who are more qualified with over and beyond the call of duty in experience and certifications and are competent enough and to have already passed a supervisory test that the friend and/or favorite and/or the person who you are holding the position for, who has not passed a qualifying supervisory test, and moreover, the veteran professional, is available to hold the position right now. That's unfair and a form of discrimination. And it's denying students access to learning information from a qualified professional. I am in the process of filing an out-of-compliance complaint regarding negligence in hiring and assigning personal aides for my students, especially when there are personal aides working out of their area in various positions. I don't have enough aides for my needy students. Also, for the past three years, I have been asking for training for the Read 180 program to no avail. Certain staff members are being sent to various training programs and others are being discriminated against. The scores, the scores of the recent tests that students took in September of 2015 are horrendous. I already have my ninth-grade special needs students in the second grade level of Be a Better Reader. And the majority of them are struggling with that book. Thank you for listening, and part two next month.
Thank you, ma'am. Before you step down, ma'am, I'm so sorry. This will be very, very brief.
Yes, sir.
Either now or indirectly, either after the meeting or through one of my staff members, would you please let us know who told you that printers were going to charter schools?
Yes, I will tell you.
That'd be great.
And you can tell her I told you.
Okay, great. Thank you. I look forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Ms. Tiffany White. Next, we have Jimmy White. Deidra Sinclair. Ms. Sinclair. Vanessa Roper.
Good evening, Advisory Board, Superintendent Surf. And I just wanted, as a parent, to discuss some issues. And I'm very disgusted with the whole situation of tonight. And even in regards to this board, acting like you don't know that folks were still in time for years. For 10 to 12-year advocates have been reporting that there was no one cleaning up these schools at nighttime. That even teachers were assigned classrooms. It was there for two months and never showed up for the rest of the year and were paid. But now we're acting like, okay, this is the new trend. And Superintendent Surf, if you go back 10 years, you will hear some of those testimonies about what was going on here. And what my problem is, and my continual problem is that we say we want budget, we say we want more money, and we continue to kill the goose that lays the golden eggs. And even to the chair lady who disrupted my daughter while she was testifying, why is it that you want to hear for those who are seeing what you want to say but don't want to hear for those who are speaking up for themselves? Why did you disrupt her? You had those who, that you wanted to say what they needed to say as it relates to the protest. And I'm not anti-union, I'm not anti-district. But I will say this, that all of us need to work together to get it done. 10 years ago, you guys, I was pro-choice. Parents had a right to choose what school they wanted to choose for their school, and that's a parent's choice. And I stand by that today. And the reason why I stand by that today is because one of the superintendents, about 10 to 12 years ago, decided that if my children or I continued to testify, that they wouldn't allow my child into a magnet school. And we all know that Cedar Street controlled a magnet school and some district school. Go look at, what's the school over there on Tim Street? And decide if it's a district school. Or is it a school for all kids? I want you guys to get this. Until everybody comes to the table, all hands on deck, from the mayor, the police department, undertakers, and whatever else in this city, until we come together and have a decent conversation of what is good for all of our children, all the time, in the schools, out of school, we're not going anywhere. If kids got to come here and testify that they're being harassed because they're testifying, we're not there yet. If kids got to be threatened and asking parents, is my child safe at school? Then we're not there yet. And Superintendent Surf, this problem was here before you and Kami, and it'd be here when you leave. The problem is that we have the same system and no change. We have kids that's going to be taught to, that's going to be taught tomorrow to act respectful. But I saw a whole lot of teachers and staff here acting disrespectful. So when the kids go to school tomorrow and you tell them to sit down, they didn't see you sit down tonight.
Mr. Roper, your time is up.
Thank you very much. And for the future, I would like to meet with this board. And Ms. Perillo, I find you disrupting my daughter very disrespectful. And we could discuss that on another day. Since you say that you report to your constituents. Well, guess what? I may have voted for you or I didn't. But I don't like the fact where children come here and testify and you cut them out. You cut them off. You let them speak the truth if it's the truth, unless the truth is not in you.
Mr. Roper, I do apologize for interrupting your daughter. It wasn't something that I did intentionally.
You're orchestrating something here. And guess what? You're taking favors too.
You have a great evening, Mr. Roper. And next, we have Mr. Rafael Burgess.
Ralph Burgess.
Ralph, sorry.
Hello, good evening. Hello, Mr. Surf. My name is Ralph Burgess, President and CEO of Burgess Publishing and Trading LLC. During the September business meeting, I had Jasmine Ives, who is the president of Girl Talk Publishing, which is a subsidiary of Burgess Publishing, present, talking about our latest release, She Thinks She's So Cute: Anti-Bully Program. It's the only anti-bully program in publishing that features a character of color. Okay? Now, I come here not just as a businessman, but I come here as a child of Newark. Someone who once daydreamed as he looked out the Prince Feet Project's window. Daydreamed of being a writer. Not just a writer, but a writer of books that help enhance the quality of life of the community in which I live in. Character education. That's why all of our books are steeped in character education. You encouraged me to submit a proposal to Dr. Perkins, which I did on September 22. I have yet to get a response. Now, I'm not assuming that it was a calculated effort to ignore my attempts. However, I was disappointed. Okay? So since apparently the proposal was not shared with you, I would just like to shed some light on some information I did send him. Our curriculum is research-based, okay? And our teachers' guide conforms with the Common Core standards. It is the number-one-selling anti-bully book on Amazon. Since April, we sold over 12,000. I also disclosed that our research disclosed that 9% of the students were able to, only 9% of the students were able to define empathy before the implementation of our program. 81% was able to do so afterwards. To the question, how likely are you to intervene when someone is being bullied? 4.5% of the students said they would before the implementation of the program. 7% said they would after the implementation of the program. Okay? Now, we specialize in character education books. I'm the author and publisher of the only anti-gang children's book in publishing. In 2008, NYC Schools Chancellor Joe Klein put out a mandate to get the best anti-gang resources. That led to them purchasing 10,000 books in one order. That's the single largest sale ever by self-publisher. To let you know that I'm not self-serving, I've donated more than 5,000 books over the last six years to after-school programs and to schools in Newark. In the hallway, Dr. Perkins cited fiscal concerns as to why a book could not be purchased for each fourth and fifth grader. I'm a businessman, so I am well aware of prioritizing during the fiscal crisis. However, I would like to urge you to also take into consideration what happens when you're dealing with a bullying catastrophe and the overhead associated with mending the wounds and, God forbid, wreath counseling.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess.
We are contractors with Cleveland Metro Schools, New York City Schools, Chris George's County School. We can change lives as a result of our publication. I urge you to give it real consideration. And I look for the opportunity to expound. further on the educational advantages of our material. Thank you. GirlTalkPublishing.com is where anyone can go to read the entire first chapter of She Thinks She's So Cute. Thank you. GirlTalkPublishing.com.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess. Next speaker, Tawana.
Chair.
Great shit. Gregory. Gary, I'm sorry. Not appearing. Miss, Mrs. Johnson. Not appearing. I knew Flo. Flo.
Hey, my kids. Uh, Flohesha Johnson, two seventy-two Clinton Place, Newark, New Jersey. Flohesha Johnson, two seventy-two Clinton Place, Newark, New Jersey. Good evening. My name is Flohesha Johnson and I'm here as a parent who has two sons in a charter school. I was born and raised in Newark, New Jersey. I attended Newark Public Schools and I also attended a Newark Magnet Public School. The education that I received in Newark Public Schools did not prepare me for the road ahead to college. So my focus for my two sons in regards to education is very important to me. I want them to succeed and obtain a high-quality education that will prepare them for the road ahead to college. Just wanna touch on that a little bit. When I, I graduated from Arts High School and when I entered my first year in college, I was in remedial classes. So therefore, I didn't have any, I didn't have any scholarship money. So I had one grant when I attended college. I had a five hundred dollar Pell Grant because my parents, my father, made too much money for me to get any financial aid. So therefore, my first year of college, I wasted half a semester taking remedial classes because I wasn't prepared. Lo and behold, I went to college and came out of college ninety thousand dollars in debt because I wasn't prepared for college. And so my main focus is for my boys not to have to go through what I went through. And also, um, I'm here to say that an elected official can't tell me where I should send my sons to school or who I should get to educate my sons. Although I have had some very influential people that have crossed my path in regards to my son's education, when in fact, I didn't think that charter school that I did choose for my school, for my stu, for my sons to go to school, which is North Star, because my son, because I, I didn't want it, in the beginning, I didn't think that North Star was the right school for my son to attend to. Because the, because the time was too, because it was too demanding of my time and too demanding of my son's time. The curriculum was too much for a kindergarten child. The day was too long and there was no recess, recess, which was just some of the issues I had. But I had someone who was very influen, influen, influential with my son staying in that school. And that is Ms. Dashay Carter. And I'm just here to say that I want to say thank you for encouraging me to keep my son in North Star. Because without you telling me to keep him there because of the high-quality education that you received from attending North Star, I would never have my son still in North Star to this day. And this year, he is the founding class of the first kindergarten to eighth grade class to complete North Star. And I'm thankful for you for that. Also, we have been put against each other to battle one another. I have family members that go to charter and the public schools, and I believe that whichever is working for them and their child, it is their choice. If a school is meeting the standards and the kids are excelling, I'm all for it. We don't have twelve years to get this thing right and we're wasting time and going back and forth instead of trying to find a solution. It's ridiculous. How can we all get the schools on the same curriculum, the same road to success for college? This city has become so divided about our school system with charter versus public. And the people to blame are the people that are sitting on the board, not the people that are sitting out here. They have made us so divided, turned us against one another, and the more and more we fight is in the other, is other than the less, is, is, the more, more we fight each other, is making it more of a, of an issue for us to create a problem, for us to create a solution to this problem.
Ms. Johnson, thank you very much.
You're welcome. And thank you again.
Next you, next we have Charles Holmes. Mr. Holmes. Next we have Michael Iovino. Hi, Vino. Next, is he here? Next we have Shelley Holloway.
Good evening. I know y'all.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Shelley Holloway. I live in the West Ward. I, like so many other parents, have children in traditional and charter school. Can I say that one more time? I have a child in traditional and charter school. To me, it's public. This argument between charter versus traditional, to me, is very irrelevant. This issue should be how can we better our children in a city that we love, which is Newark? Having a child in traditional public school, my son is in special education. My baby has benefited beyond his measure. My daughter, which goes to charter school, she has benefited extremely well. I'm grateful that I had a choice. No one told me to send my child here, to send my child there. I had a choice on where I sent my children. I love my city. I live in this city. I just want great schools for all children, whether it's traditional or public. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, family. Good evening, yeah, I took the mic off. Good evening, family. My name is Christine Carter and I'm a Newark resident, born and raised. I'm a registered voter and I'm a public school parent, not a charter parent, a public school parent. And I'm here tonight because like so many of the people in the room, I love and I care about our babies. But I'm concerned. I'm very concerned. Now that all the hoopla and all that's gone, the people who have pit us against one another as a community, they're gone. They're long gone, out of the audience. And we have to interact and deal with each other on the public bus. We have to deal with each other at ambassadors and ShopRite and Pathmark, well, Pathmark's gone now, right Denise? But we have to deal with each other. People have been so systematically divided and it's conquering our community. And our peers and our kids and our colleagues and our schools and our communities are against each other and I'm deeply concerned. I want to know, when will we begin to share best, best practices? Like what works in university? Can it work in North Star? What works in Ivy Hill? Can it work at Louise A. Spencer for Shelley and her kids? That's what I want to know. I really don't care about the profiteers and all that hoopla, that's not my concern. I want to know what works. And when we figure out what works and we really begin to put children first, then we can truly have this conversation. Until then, those people that you allow to soup you up, to beef and battle with each other, yeah, they'll continue to win. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you very much, Ms. Carter. Next we have Mr. Giedalz.
Good evening, members of the board, esteemed parents and students. Before I present my prepared remarks, I'd like to invite the teacher that was here earlier. Her name was Annette Alston. Come and visit Rise. Come and visit Team. Come and visit NCA, where we have marching bands, JV basketball, football, a debate team, fencing, cheerleading, just to name a few. Like many here tonight, we want the best for our children. We want our children to put their best effort out there, make a name for themselves, whatever it takes within the confines of the law to be successful. But on their way there, the hurdle of a sustaining political machine backed up by unions, students, their quality education are an afterthought. I could go on, but let me stress this. We desperately need to improve the quality of public education throughout Newark. Schools like KIP, North Star, Robert Feat Academy, among many other charter schools, have been able to do that. We all must closely examine what works at these schools and what can be, what can we do to replicate this, to improve education citywide? No matter where a child is enrolled, doing more with less. I am a kid parent whose son has to face consequences when he skirts outside his boundaries. For example, tucking his shirt in, his pants. His homework has to be a certain way. I get calls from, from his teachers, not in June, not in April, but from day one. So I'm involved every single day and that, and that teacher tells me, Lunadar, we want this from your, what do we need to do to help your son succeed? All parents should have that opportunity with their teacher, no matter what school they go to. The issue should not be then, public schools versus charter school. The debate should be about what schools are failing and what schools are succeeding. The debate should be about what schools have strong principals, effective teachers, real-life coaching, and efficient classroom experience. And we need to quickly address the failures, whether in traditional or charter schools. The debate should be about the needed repairs at Shabazz, Camden Street, Week Wake, and West Side. Newark should not be a city of haves and have-nots. Newark should be a community where all our children, all our children have equal and choice opportunity to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next we have Oterice Frazier.
Good evening, board. My name is Tawana Robach. I'm a taxpayer, a homeowner, and a single mom in the city of Newark. I love Newark. I have lived in Newark my whole life. As a matter of fact, I just celebrated my thirtieth anniversary as an alumni of University High School. That little girl right there, I love her more than anything. But I want to be clear, I am one of the lucky ones. I am able to send my child to a school that's public, that is actually teaching my child and has great teachers and a twenty-first century classroom. My child goes to Rise Academy. I stand before you tonight to say that I am committed and I will not rest until every parent in this room and in this city has the same exact opportunity that I had. Thank you very much.
Next we have Charles Love.
Greetings, family. Greetings. Power to the parents. Power to the parents. Okay, um, I wrote a poem tonight. I'm gonna do something different. I wrote a poem about the city of Newark and, and, and the confusion and the madness that's going on right here. As we urge to merge my mothers and my fathers with my sisters and my brothers, the Jackers and the Bangas and the Scholars that's among us, I know a strength in numbers that the power overcome and strike the system till the flow is not avowed without a punish. I said, Martin Luther King is turning over his grave right now. Malcolm X is turning over his grave right now. Amos Wilson is turning over in his grave right now. For, I'm thirty-nine years old. Fifteen years of my life I dedicated to working in the most impoverished, restrictive, kids who they said couldn't make, kids, kids, kids who they gave up on. Now, I'm deciding I'm gonna help all of the kids and I'm a criminal. I've been labeled a part of the cartel, I've been labeled a part of the charter takeover movement. If anybody in this building know Charles Love, you know one thing, I've been fighting for all of these kids. Say what you want to say about me. You can say what you want to say about me. I've fought for all of these kids my entire life. And to walk into a room tonight and you let low-life political scumbags like John Abagon sit up here and run up out of this room and talk to y'all like that, when he's gone, he isn't around right now. And we, the people, the people of Newark, the taxpayers of Newark, gotta sit up in here and let these political pundits and these outsiders come into our city and tell us who to vote for, how we gonna behave, how we gonna have our money spent? We got people up here telling us about charter, charter versus public. They are both public schools. It's public schools. These are taxpayers. These are people who pay taxes, just like every, every last person in here. And it's a, and it's a disgrace that the, that the teachers and administrators would allow the perpetuation of the misinformation to continue to spread like a, like a daggone disease up in here. And y'all won't say nothing about it. So conspiracy, conspiracy, conspiracy. Power to the parents. Power to the parents. I love y'all.
Next we have Ms. Jody Pittman.
Before I start, I just want to say, isn't it strange that people spewed hatred and then exited the room? Good evening. My name is Jody Pittman and I live in the South Ward of this great city we call Newark, and I am advocating for all children. Last week, Mayor Baraka made a point to say we need to stop pitting against child, against child in this continuous education debate, and I am here tonight to say I agree. I am neither privileged or confused or a slave to an unknown slave master, Ms. Baskerville, and my daughter attends Thrive Academy and is without question thriving. I am insulted. I am insulted by board members and politicians who spew propaganda and rhetoric and have not and would not send their children to any Newark school. We as Newark parents are fighting for our inherent right to choose what is right for our children. We understand that this district has failed children for decades and under local and state control sixty-plus years, and I find it strange that you constantly sidestep that fact. I want to hear you as elected officials alert parents that every school in the South Ward is a... I want to hear you as elected officials alert parents... Whoa. I want to hear you as elected officials alert parents that every school in the South Ward is a tier-six school. I want you to tell parents this means their children attend the worst schools in the nation and follow that statement up with charters are sucking out the life out. But you won't or you can't say this because parents would ask, when will these schools die? It is time you give our parents facts and tell the parents charters are doing more with less money. Tell parents those responsible with the education of my daughter, KIP New Jersey, gave the district back six million dollars in administrative costs, and I want every second of my time as they interrupt me.
Please continue, Ms. Pittman. Please continue.
I want you to tell parents that those responsible with the education of my daughter, KIP New Jersey, gave the district back six million dollars in administrative costs last year, and while she only receives ninety percent of her funds, she could, you continuously refer to every dime, and you need to know that every dime reaches her classroom.
Ms. Cole, please. Ms. Pittman, please continue.
Then tell parents how the one hundred percent of funding our poor babies in these failing schools in my ward receive only approximately forty-five percent that makes it to their classroom. Tell the parents that African-American children in Newark KIP schools in state testing are number two in the country. I find it strange you all never discuss and fight so viciously for the sharing of best practices or against the historical failure rendered to our babies. You see, while you are all fighting to control a dollar bill, we parents are fighting to secure all children with, will have a valuable future by any means necessary. Trust me.
Ms. Pittman, your time is up. Ms. Pittman, your time is up.
You took it. Come on. I got one minute.
Two seconds.
Trust me, it is more than playdates, as you may have read in yesterday's article. It is about the impeccable education rendered and your failure.
Ms. Pittman, your time is up.
Your failure to admit that while you press against my choice, you choose to send your children to some of the most expensive private schools in the state. You board members, you have never sent your children to school in Newark. How dare you tell me?
Ms. Pittman, thank you very much. Next we have --
Special education?
Ms. Pittman?
KIP?
Your time is up.
Eight percent of elementary schools.
Ms. Pittman.
Where Newark only has 11. KIP, middle school. Fifteen percent of special ed schools. Newark only has 18%.
I gave her her time, Ms. Pittman. Your time is up.
KIP has 22% special ed kids, and you only have 25%. It is time you guys have a conscience and care about my babies.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pittman. Next speaker? Thank you very much. Mr. Avon Naranjo.
That's a warning. Good evening, everybody. My name is Abdal Naranjo. I'm representing Newark Youth Soccer Association. I want to say many things, but my English language is limited. Please, if some person bilingual can help me translate from Spanish to English.
Okay, I'll translate. Señor, ¿le puede traducir?
Mi nombre es Abdal Naranjo y represento a Newark Youth Soccer Association.
El nombre de él es Abdal Naranjo. I mean, his name is Mr. Naranjo, and he represents Newark Soccer Academy.
Esta organización está compuesta por dos organizaciones, North Newark Soccer Academy y ACC Soccer Academy.
This organization is combined with two organizations, Northwood Academy and Soccer Academy. ¿Cuál es la otra?
ACC Soccer Academy.
ACC Soccer Academy.
Somos organizaciones sin afanes de lucro.
They are an organization without funds, nonprofit.
Hacemos el mismo trabajo que los maestros, brindamos educación, brindamos disciplina, respeto a más del deporte específico que es el soccer.
They are an organization that represents respect, discipline, and also provides service to Newark students.
Además nosotros mantenemos la cultura tradicional de nuestros pueblos latinos.
They also maintain the traditional culture of our Latino heritage.
Nuestra misión es complementar el desarrollo psicomotriz de los niños a través de la enseñanza multidisciplinaria.
Puede continuar.
Y brindar herramientas necesarias para completar los valores morales y mantenerlos alejados de los vicios sociales más comunes y las pandillas juveniles.
To summarize, what they do is just try to keep their children busy and take them out of the gangs.
Cabe señalar que nosotros no recibimos ayuda de entidades gubernamentales ni de los gobiernos seccionales.
They do not receive any outside funds.
Hemos recibido sí ayudas directas por parte de las principales de las dos escuelas, que son Luis Muñoz Marine y McKinley School.
They only receive funds from Luis Muñoz Marine and McKinley School.
Nosotros nos mantenemos en base a donaciones de los padres de familia.
They maintain themselves because of support from their parents. Tiene menos segundo, menos de un minuto.
En la última solicitud que nosotros hicimos para obtener el gym, hemos recibido la ingrata noticia de que nos van a cobrar 25 mil dólares por utilizar el gym de McKinley School y 25 mil dólares por utilizar el gym de Luis Muñoz Marine.
Puede continuar, y así yo le termino. Ya su tiempo, ya acabó.
Para nosotros es imposible reunir esa cantidad de dinero, ya que nosotros nos dedicamos a ayudar a los niños de escasos recursos económicos para mantenerles en actividad y alejados de los vicios, como había dicho.
Okay, lo que yo voy a hacer es ya terminar por usted diciéndole la razón. Está bien?
Está bien.
Okay, the reason why they're here is because they would like to seek a waiver because they're being asked to pay 2,500 per school, Luis Muñoz Marine and McKinley. 25,000 for the use of the gym for the soccer program. Okay, Mr. Naranjo.
Nosotros apelamos a la sensibilidad del Distrito de Educación para que nos ayuden en este sentido. No tenemos condiciones para pagar esa cantidad. Nosotros queremos mantener a nuestros niños en actividad y sobre todo alejados de los vicios. Muchas gracias.
Okay, Chair. Señor Naranjo, lo que vamos a hacer es lo que ya hicimos. Usted me mandó la carta. Ya se la envié al departamento apropiado y estamos esperando para ya tener la respuesta. Ms. Carter? Actually, what I told Mr. Naranjo was that, which is something that he already did, he submitted a letter to me and I forwarded to Ms. Gilbert, and we are just waiting for reply. Chair.
Thank you very much. Could I -- I'm not entirely sure I understood the issue, but I know I am sure I want to help. I just, I don't know whether my colleague, Assistant Superintendent Leon, could -- I wonder whether you could just take a minute to speak to him so that I can get a fuller picture than I have, and I appreciate your comments. I think I understood you to say that you're trying to run, and forgive me, you're trying to run a soccer program and your program is being charged a certain amount of money to be in a gym, and you're seeking a waiver from that fee. Did I get that right? So I would like to understand more about that. Thank you very much for bringing that to my attention.
Thank you very much.
Gracias. Next we have Mr. --
Excuse me.
Yes.
You had two.
Okay. Ms. Fonseca? No, Ms. Baskerville?
She said, Ms. Fonseca said she would defer. Thank you. So my question or comment, I'm not sure what it is. So we had this occur in the recent past regarding alumni associations, and that was resolved. But I think that, at least for myself, I'm not exactly clear. Obviously, there's been a drastic change of policy, so I would like to request that the board see this policy. I'd like to know who changed the policy, when. We certainly didn't vote on this change of policy, so could we please have that? And also, I think it is absolutely necessary that we have some sort of a process that is transparent, that the board is aware of, so that we do not stop people who are actually doing a service to the district from utilizing board property and asking nonprofits and such to pay to use the board facilities. It had been my just kind of institutional knowledge in the past that the only people who paid were folks who were in no way associated or doing a service to the district, but folks who wanted to use our facility for some sort of a profit-making venture. So I'd like to, I'm simply saying, may we see the policy, may we examine the policy. Probably the facilities committee is the best place, but all board members should at least see it and know who's making the decisions, how they're being made, and we need to have some input into what this policy is.
By the way, I completely agree with that. I just learned about this policy, and I do think it is something that the board should be brought to the board's attention and discuss and consider modifications. I learned about the, if I misstate this, the sorority that was not able to participate in professional development site, and obviously I need to talk with my colleagues, but I do think that's something that's worthy of examination. Thank you for bringing that up.
You're welcome. Just, I mean, I just want to be perfectly clear that what we need to know now, or as soon as possible, is exactly when the change was made and who made the change, and we'd like to see the policy.
Chair. Ms. Fonseca?
Señor Naranjo, muchísimas gracias por hacer el esfuerzo de venir y hablar de lo que está sucediendo, y le quiero dar la gracia también por lo que usted está haciendo con los niños de esta ciudad. I just thanked Mr. Naranjo for the services that he's providing to our children, and I do want to say on the record that as a board, can we please get a response as to what he is requesting? Because we are in a city where our children are neglected heavily, and when you have someone or nonprofit organizations such as this one providing a service to take our children off the streets through, whether it's an athletic program or just getting them out of gangs and stuff like that, I think that's something that we need to support, especially if our facilities are not being utilized. So I'm just requesting that if we could please all get a response in writing to his letter that I was not aware that he submitted. Because if our focus as a board is for the children, then we need to support anything that is going to help our children and take them out the streets instead of charging for someone that's providing a service for free for our children.
So if I may just make one comment first to Board Member Fonseca. We will, Mr. Leon is hopefully providing the translation, ensure that we have the right information. My office will start to look at this in the morning. And also to Board Member Baskerville Richardson. There has been on the books, that is, NPS policy, a provision that did allow for a fee to be charged. Clearly, we're gonna look at the right exceptions for that to ensure that, as you've stated rightfully, and as a superintendent has confirmed and endorsed, that we will make sure that the proper entities are not charged to provide services to our district and our students in the community.
Madam Chair. Mr. Lewis and then Mr. Jackson.
Oh, I want to, Madam, General Counsel just took out my mouth what I wanted to say, and I just want to make sure as a board member that we don't, you know, open up a door that we might down the road regret. Because if you let one organization do it, you're gonna have every organization in the city or outside the city wanting to use our facilities for free. So we have to really examine, there's, I understand, you know, alumni associations and community meetings, but when we talk about usage of a space and a large amount of time, we need to, you know, really examine that as a tired board before we open ourselves up to a large door.
Mr. Jackson?
So, in the interest of time, I'm gonna be really quick. Since when were nonprofit organizations and alumni associations and other programs charged for using school facilities? Because, you know, this is not my first dog and pony show. I've been dealing with no public schools my whole life. I remember going to community meeting, PTA meetings, nonprofit organization meetings, Stop the Violence meetings, and we were in Central, we were in Camden Street, we was at Shabazz. You name it, we were there. Nobody was charged any money. However, you did have to go through a permit and certain processes, and the school made sure that you had a custodian and security at the location for the amount of time you were occupying the building. This is something totally new to me. I can only speak for myself. This is something totally new to me that we've been charged, that organizations have been charged. And if it is a provision in the policy, I would definitely love to see it. And since it's been on the books for quite some time, why now all of a sudden would it be used? And who would be the person to dictate whether that policy is enacted or not?
Mr. Jackson, I'm gonna tell you, in the past, nonprofit organizations have been charged. Alumni associations and stuff like that have, in community meetings, that was excluded. But I have seen nonprofits be charged in the past to use our facilities. But alumni associations, that's new to me. Alumni associations, community meetings, for, you know, anything dealing with meetings. But as far as alumni, I mean, nonprofits holding space in the district, that always been on the books. Sometimes the district enforces, sometimes they don't. I see the district trying to just uphold policy.
Well, you know, we gotta be careful when you say enforce a policy and then don't enforce a policy, you know.
But we actually have, the hour is late, and I think we have a lot more agreement than disagreement. I don't know the answer to your question, when this policy came into place. I personally just learned about it. I believe that there are, to Mr., to the Vice Chair's comments, we do need to have sensible rules. For example, no vendors or no profits, all alumni associations. Maybe there's a committee that looks at it on an ad hoc basis. We could solve this problem together, and I'm committed to doing that.
Ms. Wilson, first and then Ms. Baskerville.
I just want to briefly add that we need to know all the details before we jump to conclusions. Let me refer board members to the website. The policy is on the website. It's called Lease Facilities and can be searched readily through our interactive piece on the website. So we need the details associated with the rental and the permit. There are a number of factors that could come into play if admission charges are being made for people to enter for whatever reason. If insurance comes into play, there are a number of things. So I think we need to have full details before we speculate or make decisions.
Ms. Baskerville Richardson?
Yes, so, I mean, I absolutely agree that each specific case is different, which is why I think it needs to go through committees so that everyone can be clear and the board members can have some input into what the policy is. I think that, you know, I mean, I have my own ideas as to why we're starting to charge these amounts now, so I just simply want to say we can't, we can't balance the budget on the backs of community organizations and nonprofits who are doing a service. Because if you look at it in the reverse, there are folks who are working in the district who have not simply asked to use our buildings, but who have submitted all kinds of applications, et cetera, et cetera, and who come in and do even less of a service, but we are paying them. So when someone who we can clearly see is doing a service for students and they are not asking to be paid by us, but simply asking for use of the facility, I think that that is, you know, in a different category, understanding that all the details do need to be looked at. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next we have Mr. Alberto N. Carra. Señor Alberto? No? All right, next we have Ramadan Bruston.
Good evening. Good evening, good evening. My name is Ramadan Brunson, with an N at the end of Brunson. I'm a West Ward resident, proud parent of a North Star student. I'm also a proud uncle to my nieces and nephews who attend traditional public schools. And for me, it's basically having a choice, just like my father did. He raised four boys up to have their choice on what school they wanted to go to, what store they wanted to go to, and what friends they wanted to be around. I'm just all about the choice, basically. North Star is doing great for my son, and the traditional public school Speedway, I'm not into all, I don't know about all the mishaps that's going on to the school, but from my point of view, everything looks good, and we're just trying to come together as a community in the West Ward. And I'm gonna leave it like that. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you very much. Next we have Shakima Jensen. Ms. Jenkins? Next we have Mr. London Brown.
Good evening, London Brown, 220 South Sixth Street, Newark. Mentoring Big Brothers, Big Sisters, My Brother's Keeper, the D.A. Program, the P.A.L. Big Sisters, My Brothers Keeper, the DARE Program, PAL Program. We need these programs in our schools. We need more social supports for our students. These past few weeks, we've heard some very, very serious, heard about some very serious incidents occurred in our schools. From Rise Academy where a student was caught with a weapon to Shabazz where a child wore a weapon and bought some narcotics, to Mount Vernon where a child walked out of the school, Weekway, Newark Leadership Academy, student was shot, you know, Westside had a fight on Friday evening, Behringer, a lot of race relations between the Dominicans and Hispanics. We need more social supports and interventions for our students. And particularly this Friday, the day before Halloween, I'm asking for increased security at our comprehensive high schools. At Behringer, Rooms 101, 205, 209, 204 have bilingual students with no bilingual teachers. The aides are, who are assigned, are not bilingual. So that puts the students in a lose-lose situation. There's a lack of athletic equipment for the basketball, for football team. The coaches had to go out of pocket. They have no winter gear. You have Arts and Humanities and you have STEAM. You have two academies in one school. So the budget should be shared for the athletic program because it's one football team, it's one basketball team, one color guard. School IDs are crucial. The SAT is coming up on November 9th. I came before this board last month. We have students who pay $50 for SAT registration. They get to the SAT sites and then they're turned away because they don't have a valid school ID. This is very, very disheartening because we are working with students from the charters, parochial, and public schools twice a week, preparing them for the SATs. We get them registered, we prep them, we have to fill out their college applications and then when they get to the SAT sites, they're turned away. We need to make sure that all of our students, starting with our seniors, have school IDs. We're going into November and some students still don't have them. This is the second test that's been administered and again, students are in danger of being turned away again. I also want to talk about the Newark Enrollment Center. I'm asking this board to request and audit of how many families are still waiting for placement. We keep hearing horror stories about students not being enrolled yet. First cycle is just about completed and some students are yet to be placed in school. I want to know what the October 15th count looks like district-wide. How many of our charter school students have returned to public schools since October 15th? And are we going to get some of those funds? Harassment, intimidation, and bullying is a problem in many of our schools and we need to definitely address that issue. I want to thank the board members and our superintendent who have come out to some of the football games and extracurricular activities to support our students. It means a lot to our kids to see adults come out and support them when they're participating in the extracurricular activities. I'm hoping that the budget will be balanced so that our students can participate in more activities and programs and that the hardships that are being placed on some of the students for transportation will be addressed before the winter season approaches. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Next we have Ms. Wilhelmina Holder.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
Mr. Lewis?
What is this deal with these IDs? Because Mr. Brown been coming here all year about IDs. Can we please get some type of solution to IDs in our high schools?
I don't know the issue. Could someone say more or can we speak after the meeting about it? Is this about signing up for the SATs? Mr. Brown, is that the?
This is about our students having valid ID to enter the buildings with respect to schools. This is about the school students having IDs for admission for the SAT sites.
So the, I don't mean to be thick about this, Mr. Brown, but the concern is that students are actually not being issued by IDs and that is a barrier to their, for example, taking the SATs?
Yes. They're not, they don't have IDs and they're turned away at the SAT sites. Some of them take them in Newark Public Schools.
That's right.
And then someone take them to schools outside of the district. And when they get to these schools, all of them don't have a passport or driver's license. The only form ID someone would possibly have is a school ID and when they've been deprived of that, they're registering and some of these parents are paying out of pocket because if you don't get free and reduced lunch, the parent has to pay out of pocket. And then when they don't know how to ID, it's money wasted.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Ms. Wilson, who in your world, if I may be so bold, oversees that?
IDs are actually at the individual high school levels. All schools should have IDs. I'm not sure. Do you know which specific schools, Mr. Brown?
I know West Side is definitely one of them. And I believe Behringer, one of those academies as well, and Newark Leadership Academy.
I'll check with Deputy Superintendent Haggerty.
You or I will do that, but I appreciate your stepping up. Thank you. Thank you very, very much. And I'm sorry that I said it was your department. But we will thank you, Mr. Brown, for bringing that to our attention.
I want to say too, I can attest to that too because we had a meeting with the principal the other day, last week, I think. And part of the problem at West Side is that the vendor, each school has a different vendor and the vendor obviously didn't get the part in time to the school so the children could not get their IDs. And a lot of kids don't have passports. So it's really unfair because we do the hard work. We do the work you guys are talking about doing. We actually do the work. We take the kids to the site, we go and do the prep work and we also drive them to college when they can't get back and they don't have enough money. So it's unfair for us as community people who are unpaid and I love doing the work, but y'all got to do your part too. And you can at least get school IDs. That's minimum. So I begin with this, that I heard tonight, I'm listening all night about the charter versus the public struggle. And unfortunate thing is the state actually caused this and one of the things they did recently was when they held the charter schools harmless to the tune of $25 million, that caused such an inequity on the part of the traditional public schools. So what we have now is parents fighting one another when really the state is at fault for most of this because the design is not to support the traditional public schools. It's obvious to me. I sat back there thinking as a graduate of Weekway High School and all my siblings went to Weekway and I thought about all the colleges we went to. It wasn't a magnet school, it wasn't a comprehensive school. It was just schools that did its job. And where do we land? We got accepted at Smith, Mount Holy Oak, Bassett, Syracuse, Spelman, Howard, Princeton, Fisk, University of Michigan, Florida. I'm just thinking Antioch, my youngest brother, who wasn't the smartest marble in the box, but he went to Antioch and did well. I'm just saying if we do our job for students, the kids can strive and go anywhere they want. This, we have to be honest, Commissioner Surf, if you're going to levels of playing field, you have to stop the expansion of charter schools because they've already got such an advantage. You can't say now we're going to do one side and not look at the other. In order for that equation to be equal, and Brown is the math expert, I do the literacy, but I do know a little bit about equations. So if on this side we're here, in order to get this side to pull up, you're going to have to start, stop the expansion on the other side so that you can put the resources where it really belongs in the traditional public schools. Because that's where most of our children go. The issue tonight also at West Side is our Title I funds. Now somehow there's a discrepancy. We were told $190,000 is the Title I allocation for 2015-16, but the federal government told us, and I have the report here, it's $202,672. So I'm just wondering where that discrepancy is. Is that the district did not release the entire funds to West Side or did the state not release the entire money to the district? Either way, we have a problem because it's impacting our pathways, the college program, which we hope to have at West Side so we can have the 100 children get into pathways so they can graduate with a dual degree when they leave. And it's also impacting our after-school program and it's impacting us in terms of offering the support that our children need. I also say to the board, I'm going to say it again, I'd like you to do a resolution that Kami do not get that bonus that was part of her contract because she failed to, she failed to fulfill her contractual obligation with respect to rightsizing the budget with a 63.4 budget gap and now we have a $15 million actual hole and she failed to create the great schools and great leaders as she said in her contract. Now, the board needs to step up and put a resolution on the table that she not receive that because she is responsible and the state as well because there was supposed to be some oversight and monitoring that did not occur. And you, I elected you, I went out and raised money for you, I opened up my homes to you, and I expect you, 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 and you to do your job. Because I tell you, my grandchildren are impacted and the people in the community are impacted. Finance Committee, I need you to step up. Mr. Surf, I don't understand the statement from you, Ariana, that he will not give transparency at the next budget meeting, some transparency. It has to be 100% transparency with the document that we all can review and take to our accountants or whoever we want to take it to to see if the budget is right-sized. I don't want to hear, if there's no transparency, do not hold the meeting. Walk out. You lead the way and we will follow you. Thank you.
Ms. Holder, thank you very much. Next we have Ms. Cheryl Crawford.
Hello? Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'm Cheryl Crawford. I am a retired ELA teacher and coach. I want to first say thank you to Mr. Haggerty, Mr. Reed, and Ms. Carter for taking time to find out about the guidance department at West Side. Thank you so very much. The problem was rectified. When I was doing my graduate work at Rutgers, New Brunswick, I had to take an elective, which was, I took sociology of education course, crisis in education. I did a research paper on public schools versus charter schools. When I finished my paper, and this was the early 90s, I came up with the decision after all my studying that charter schools wouldn't fly. Here I am in 2015 and I was totally wrong. I feel like right now I'm in a Twilight Zone. As an ELA coach and teacher, some people that know me come to talk to me about their children's education. In two short months, three parents of charter school students talked to me about how the schools, in terms of reading and writing, were not taking care of the children who were accelerating, who were above average. As a Newark public school teacher and coach, we had in those days visionaries, Dr. Lourdes Mitchell, Mary Ann Riley, who taught those of us that came under their umbrella how to do literacy instruction. You maybe start with a lesson, you beam it out to the whole class, but then you have rotating groups according to their abilities. That's not happening in some of the charter schools. I actually went to an open house with two parents. They didn't even have classroom libraries like we have in public schools. In our public schools, I went to Mr. Brown's nephew's classroom, a library in 14th Avenue, one that made me feel so good and so proud. I'm asking you to stop cutting budgets, especially to these important years. Our children need to have libraries that they can go to to read a book. Teachers in public schools teach the children to be librarians. I'm asking you, please, help the schools by helping teachers buy books to put in their libraries. Teachers are buying their own paperback books, putting them in their libraries. That's something a district should be doing to them. It should be doing that to them. Our children, a lot of our children are, gets hungry for what, something to read. Give them materials so that they can read and excel because public schools matter and they do work.
Thank you very much, Ms. Crawford. Next we have Ms. Janice Reedus.
Good evening, everyone. Janice Reedus, 13th Avenue PTA President. I'm glad to be here with my Vice President, Lyndon Brown, my Secretary, Wilhelmina Holder, and I'm also a special needs parent at 13th Avenue. I'm tired. I'm really, really tired. I've been coming to these meetings now for six years. My daughter's been in the autism program here in Newark for six years. The autism program, I must say, at least at 13th Avenue, was fabulous. That's why she's there and I'm very happy for that. Sadly, the other programs at most of our schools, including at 13th Avenue, are not doing as well. Fortunately, we have, we have teachers at our school in the autism program who are determined that our children learn despite your cutbacks, despite your budget shortfalls, despite everything you do to discourage them from teaching our children, and it's getting worse every year. Now I'm hearing it, of course, at the regular education levels and it's, despite the charter school parents, I mean, that's great that they have a choice. Too many of our children don't have a choice to where we send our schools. I'm a proud graduate of the Newark Public Schools from K through 12. I went to Arts High, graduated from Arts High and had advanced programs. I was sorry to hear that young lady say that she had to take remedial classes. That was not the case with me. I excelled on my SATs and got almost an 800 on the vocabulary. So I don't, I'm really sorry to hear that, but that was not the case for me. I really feel like the education that I got for myself, me and my siblings, should be happening for all of our children, which is why me and my brothers, we send our children to Newark Public Schools. And we're active parents, thank God, but I mean, this should be an equitable thing, not an us versus them. So I'm all for public schools. As a special needs parent, my child could not go to a charter school. So that's not a choice. So they should stop saying there's a choice, there isn't. For my school, for my child, it's for public school and thank God she's getting the education she deserves and needs. But this is truly tiring. I'm tired of coming to these meetings, saying the same things over and over again. My colleagues say the same things and nothing's getting rectified. Commissioner Surf, Governor Christie, you guys have defunded our schools, you're shortchanging our students in the public schools, you're just sending your money with these hedge funds, with these charter schools. It's truly sad and very disturbing and I really think it's unfair. Stop coming here saying you want what's best for all the children because you obviously don't. The school should have been repaired years ago. It's very disheartening to see the Boys Club on Livingston Avenue, right around the corner from the school, 39th Avenue, being torn down for yet another charter school. I mean, really? And you can't fix the schools that were here for, at this point, over a century. Come on. That is totally unfair and just not right. And if you guys can't see that, I don't know what you can. I know this is a national crime with these charter schools. It's happening everywhere, not just in Newark, but since I am here in Newark, I'm going to speak about what's happening here. And I'm tired of it. And I need to get home. My poor daughter's calling me, asking me where am I. And I'm at a board meeting again, talking about the same thing again. Good evening.
Thank you very much. Now, this concludes public participation? No? Oh, I don't have anyone.
Was that added, Mr. Charlie? Okay, that name was added.
Okay, Ms. Janice Cole. Please forgive me.
And before you start my time, I need to do administrative tasks. Right after the last board meeting, I signed up for public participation with this meeting. So that means my name should have been somewhere near the top of the list and not the bottom of the list, Mr. Surf. So I think you need to look into how, when we submit online, how our names are submitted on this list because this has happened more than one time. I don't know how charter school parents who have no benefit in the city of Newark for Newark Public Schools come to a Newark Public School meeting and dominate it and our president sit there and allow them to do what she won't allow me to do at a public meeting. That she will correct me, that Mr. Hassan will call me out in a public meeting, but let you let these charter school parents act a fool in here tonight and they are totally a district. Mr. Surf, you know for yourself, if you called the charter school office in Trenton, I did it. I asked them, was charter school and traditional public school the same district? They told me, no, it was two separate districts. So, and you know that they are not public schools. They only legislated through the legislature. In the Washington State case, Supreme Court made a decision. I don't know why it hasn't been filed or reduplicated here in Newark. So now, I came to you to address the budget issue. I have an issue and I'm asking for every board member and Ariella Perella and you, Marquis, and Chief Counsel to ask for an investigation into the charter school leases that I received when charter schools use the electric, they use the water, they use the security, and they participate in sports. And we only charge $5.25 a square foot. Or we only been charging them less than $3,000 to rent our spaces. There is budget mouth fees and stare and I want to know how that price was developed. Was it a formula? Where did it come from? How did it come? Now, I did ask the question. You did give me the leases. I don't know if you didn't think I was going to read the leases and I did. And I did not see how you came up with the per-square footage. Even in commercial space, it's $25 a square feet, $50 a square feet. They're paying less than our homeowners. Our homeowners should be pissed off. You got North Star paying $30,000 a year for their space and they don't- You got North Star paying $30,000 a year for their space, and they don't put money in that. So I'm asking that you all ask and mandate that someone investigate these charter school leases and how they came up with the square footage charge. They've charged $5.25 per square feet and $5.44 early on per square feet, and then in some of the leases, like North Star and Kip Academy, they don't even have the, how they came up and developed the price of two thou, less than $3,000 to take up that space. Second, I want to say that, Mr. Serf, we talked about community sustainable schools. We need to start developing them now with best practices. I also want to talk about, um, the mo, when did you all send out your resolution for Mala Jacy to support to stop the moratorium on charter school growth? Second, Chief Counsel, you said to me at the business meeting, you would get back to me, because, Mr. Serf, you, you had to leave early, and maybe you can answer tonight, that you said, and I was at NJ PAC, that no more public schools would close. You said that on the stage when you was on that panel. But yet I hear that Hawthorne, Brick Avon, and Peschan put an application in to become a charter school, when you know the law is, and Chief Counsel know the law is, you have to have 51% of the vote to change a public school into a charter school. So I want to know any public school that was changed into a charter school, I want to see the vote and the 51%, because if you didn't get the 51%, and the 51% have to be taken from parents and teachers. So if you don't have it, and you don't have it recorded, then those schools that were turned into charter schools need to come back to public schools, and we need to get our money back. Second, I asked for Mr. Hagerty to give me the law that said that charter school children who went to our public schools did not have to pay when they are a separate district from our public school district. That's where our money in the budget going. The money in the budget is malice and malfeasance, and no one is account, taking accountability. I'm not going to let them throw me off my game. My game is, we need local control, we need accountability on those leases, and we need to know what the fair market value and the square footage of those spaces that was rented and what you didn't charge. You need to figure out how you're going to put it back in your pockets.
Ms. Cole, thank you very much.
Well, Ms. Cole, you packed a lot in your three, in your, in your three minutes. Uh, you, you, you really did, so I'm going to try to, um, answer a few of your questions. Uh, the, first thing, I've seen the same flyer you have, right? And I can tell you, now, my turn.
No, I'm not talking, you talking, so I'm going to.
Okay, uh, so, uh, I've seen the flyer you have. Um, uh, the, um, I am not aware of, um, any plan to close any school. Uh, I don't know who, or, uh, uh, if someone wanted to file a charter application, they're more than free to do it. That's not in my jurisdiction or the jurisdiction of everybody, anybody in this board, it's not part of my plan, okay? So we got to stop throwing out rumors and sowing discord when the facts don't support it. The second thing is, um, you, uh, I, i, if you called the charter office in, in, in Newark, I can tell you.
I didn't call the charter office.
I mean, excuse me, charter, I'm in Trenton, pardon me, in Trenton. I can tell you exactly what they said, okay? Um, so the law, which was passed by the legislature.
I don't need to go through that, I know.
Well, no, if you're going to say things, Ms. Cole, I'm going to set the record straight.
But you can't set the record straight, they're not the same district.
Well, I certainly can't do it if you're talking over me.
But you want to, you want, see, what you do good well is cover your own ass.
Ms. Cole, please allow him to speak.
No, how he going to speak when he's getting ready to tell a non-truth? They are not the same district as Newark Public School.
Okay, Ms. Cole, thank you very much.
That's okay, we're, we're, we're done, we're done, thank you.
All right, the, um, so concludes public participation.
Board members, uh, remaining items of business.
Madam Chair, I move, uh, for consent vote on our finance and operation items.
Thank you. We're, we have a board resolution first, board members, I'm sorry. Withdraw that motion, please, Mr. Shaw. We have a board resolution, I believe, on the agenda.
Where?
Item 10.0.
Number eight. I mean, 10.0.
I don't have it on my.
On Janice's, who prints on the report.
I just got it. I don't have it on my.
It's supposed to be there.
So, it's on the printed.
It's the first item that's before program instruction. 10.0, do board, all board members have that?
It's not on this, but I will draw the motion, but it's not on this agenda right here.
It's in the paper one.
Uh, it's, it's, it's on the, uh, it's on the electronic agenda. Can you move it up, Ms. Shawley? It's at 10, 10.0. At least it's on my screen.
It's, it's on my screen.
It's not on my.
But you don't have it? It's on my screen, all right.
We should have it, though. It's Holder.
Yeah.
All right, well, it was on the agenda, voted by the board at the business meeting, so it is.
Should be, it's probably just dropped off, but it should, there's.
I mean, if you want to proceed to the finance items, it's fine, too. What do you want to?
No.
He has a motion. Okay, thank you, so that, motion's, uh, rescinded, thank you very much. So I believe we have a board resolution.
Uh, yes, Ms. Baskerville Richardson, you want to raise the mic?
Uh, sure, thank you. So, uh, this is a resolution that was discussed at the business meeting, and, uh, this is the language that we will be voting on this evening. Newark Board of Education Charter School Resolution for Delegate Assembly. Whereas Governor Chris Christie proposed language that was adopted by the legislature as part of the state budget for fiscal years 2015, 2016, that held charter schools harmless from the negative impact of the governor's proposal to flat fund public education, thereby resulting in greater amounts of public dollars being diverted from public school districts to support charter schools. And whereas the delegate assembly is the official policymaking body of the New Jersey School Boards Association. And whereas education-related policies resulting from prior delegate assembly and board of directors' actions are codified in the New Jersey School Board Association's Manual of Positions and Policies on Education. Now therefore be it resolved that the Newark Board of Education supports the following proposed additional language for adoption by the delegate assembly and inclusion in the New Jersey School Board Association's Manual of Positions and Policies on Education as presented to the New Jersey School Board Association by the Highland Park Board of Education. The New Jersey School Board Association believes that the governor and the legislature should not use the budget process to hold charter schools and non-public schools harmless from state budget cuts or reallocations of state funds at the expense of public school districts. And be it further resolved that this resolution be placed on the agenda for consideration at the November 21st, 2015 Delegate Assembly of the New Jersey School Board Association.
Any discussion?
Yes, I have a question. Uh, the first section of the resolution, it alludes to Governor Christie's proposed language that was adopted by the legislature. What specific language, uh, was adopted by the legislature?
So, uh, Board Member Hassan, I actually do not have that, uh, with me, but I did present this same, uh, information, uh, to the board at the business meeting, and, uh, there was actually, I think, ample opportunity for anyone to investigate or to ask any questions or to actually do that research themselves. So I do not actually have that information with me at this time, but no, uh, like I said, no questions and no opposition to this proposed resolution has been raised within the last week.
So I did do the research my, myself, and I have the documentation here, but I just want to get some, some clarity on it, because, uh, from my understanding, the proposed language that was adopted actually calls for, uh, payments to charter schools to be in line with the charter law, as opposed to the Appropriations Act, which was used for last, last, uh, last year's budget. And based off my interpretation, the Appropriations Act actually caused school districts to pay charter schools more money than they would, than they should have paid by following the charter law. So it seemed, I mean, based off of my reading, the proposed, uh, the proposed language is trying to reverse that so that school districts aren't paying excess money to charter schools.
I'm sorry, I'm really not clear on what you're, uh, actually saying. The only thing that I can really say is whatever information that you have, you certainly have the opportunity to share it with the board prior than the moment of the vote, if there was some information that we needed to, uh, digest or that we needed to, uh, discuss. This particular resolution is in support of the resolution, uh, passed by Highland Park Board Association. It has also been, uh, uh, passed by a number of other, uh, districts, and what we are doing here is basically, um, aligning with those other districts. And, uh, the point of it is, I think, very clear. If there are some specifics, as I said, that we needed to know, the opportunity was there to share that with this board prior to this moment.
So I'll ask this question before we go into the vote. I think last, at last meeting, you made it very clear that it's board process, about board process, to make sure that resolutions are funneled through committees. To my knowledge, this wasn't a resolution that was funneled through committees, and also, excuse me. As an individual who presented the resolution, I think it should be up to that individual to make sure that the appropriate information or supplemental information is provided to all board members so that they have an opportunity to digest it. I think it's unfair and inconsiderate for that expectation to be made of board members. If myself or any other board member came forward with a resolution, I think it's up to us to make sure that any appropriate information that's available is shared with all board members.
So had you prior to this particular moment asked for additional information, I'm sure that that would not have been a problem. Right now, at the moment when we are about, uh, to vote, is not the appropriate time to ask for additional information. And I absolutely believe that everything that we do should go through the, uh, appropriate, uh, process. This particular, uh, resolution was, uh, and Ms. Perillo, you can, uh, help me if I'm a little bit off on the dates, but I believe that this was first, uh, emailed to, uh, on the 1st of September approximately, and, uh, basically should have gone through the finance committee. That did not happen, however, in discussion, uh, with the finance committee, uh, chair and the board president, it was felt that to present it at the, uh, business committee meeting and then to allow, uh, the time for people to ask questions was, uh, sufficient. So, you know, uh, the resolution that you actually presented for, uh, consideration by the New Jersey School Board Association did not, uh, go through committee and actually was brought up at the last moment. So I agree 100% that this should have gone through committee, but because it didn't, it did go through the proper channels that were available at that time. So, uh, Madam Chair, unless we're going to be here all night, I would simply like to, uh, request that we, uh, I want to, um, present this as a formal motion at this time, and if we are able to move forward on the vote, I think that that's simply the appropriate thing to do at this late hour.
Ms. Baskerville Richardson, I would like to defer to, um, the Chair for the Finance Committee to respond.
I have a motion on the floor.
Second.
Second.
Can we discuss now? Since the motion, I, miss, um, by Mr. Hassan's, uh, questions, it brought other questions to mind. I think that we need to probably, uh, bring this resolution back to the Finance Committee and review it further before we are going on this.
So, um, what would happen, um, Mr. Lewis? Basically, the, um, the New Jersey School Board Association Delegate Assembly takes place on November 21st, and, uh, there would be no opportunity to vote on this particular issue in support of the, uh, of the resolution for, uh, that Highland Park presented. So because that resolution, Mr. Lewis was accepted, uh, by the New Jersey School Board Association, it will be on the agenda at the delegate assembly, and, uh, many districts, uh, that, that's similar to Newark District will be supporting that resolution. And, uh, so that is the reason for not taking it back. And again, there was, um, ample opportunity, and it did go to all board members on the 1st of September. So, um, so I'm just saying that I'm not, I'm not going to, uh, withdraw the motion because of the timeliness of the issue. So if it goes up, it goes up, if it goes down, but if we were to wait and take it back to committee, there would not be ample opportunity for us to support this particular, uh, resolution at the delegate assembly.
We could, we could, uh, we could do, it's two, it's two other options we have here. We can do a poll vote, uh, to allow the board to go back and do, um, their necessary research, and also we could just put it on our business agenda to vote on our business meeting as well, so that it can get to, to the assembly in time for the vote. So I'm, I asked the Chair of Finance, I'm asking that we, uh, look at one of those two options, and either we can do a poll vote, or we can, uh, put this on the agenda for vote in our business meeting of November.
All right, so right now we have a motion and a second, so, uh, Ms. Baskerville Richardson, unless you're willing to withdraw the motion, I think.
No, because of the timeliness of the issue, and I think that because it's important that we, uh, take a stand and that we join with other districts that are supporting this resolution, I'm not willing to, uh, withdraw this resolution, uh, and, uh, you, you know, so no, I'm not willing to withdraw.
Then proceed, you know, we have to take the vote.
All right, so I have a, I have a motion by Ms. Baskerville, I believe it was seconded by Ms. Carter. Right, okay, so the motion is the, uh, board, is it board-generated resolution in support of the Highland Park motion regarding charter school funding. Ms. Baskerville Richardson?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Fonseca?
Yes.
Mr. Hassan?
No.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Abstain.
Mr. Rashidi?
Abstain.
Mr. Salinger?
Yes.
Chair Perella?
Abstain.
Board members, please vote. I have, uh, five yeses, one no, three abstentions, motion carriers. Remaining items on the agenda, uh.
Please do your physical.
Yes, please vote.
Sorry, General Counsel.
Thank you, Madam SBA. Board members, please vote electronically. Remaining items, finance and operation and legal.
May you repeat that, please?
Motion to vote. It doesn't allow me to vote.
Do you want, just.
Vote electronically, board members.
Um, Madam Chair, I call for, uh, uh, I move to, uh, take a consent vote for our finance operation items.
Okay, there's a, uh, motion to take the, uh, finance and operation items as a package. It's moved by Mr. Hassan, seconded by Ms. Carter. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Okay, we're going to take the finance items as a package. Um, just for clarification purposes, board members, uh, 12.2 is authorization of district travel, and Madam SBA, I believe that includes the board members' trip. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, so we're going to, on that one, since we don't want you voting on your own travel, um, we're going to phrase 12.2 as the district travel with the understanding that each board member is going to be abstaining on his or her individual travel. Everybody got that? Okay, all right. We're going to do roll call on the finance items. Do I have a motion, uh?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Baskerville Richardson?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Fonseca?
Yes.
Mr. Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Rashidi?
Yes.
Mr. Salinger?
Yes.
Chair Perella?
Yes.
Finance items passing, Ms. Lee. Remaining items, uh, board members, please vote. Okay, we're, we're waiting up for the, uh, finance items to show.
Excuse me, board.
Excuse me, Board, I have a question regarding, just a point of clarification from the Board through the Chair. What is the agenda changes that one meeting allow the public to speak on regards to the agenda like Patterson and Jersey City does and then another meeting you don't? You know, what's the deal with that? How do you just change the way you do business as a Board and exclude the public in the agenda participation and then you, another meeting you don't say anything?
Mr. Jones, um, let us finish the, um, the voting and then, um, on the side, I will address this matter.
No, I don't want to side. I like to explain publicly.
Public participation is over, Mr. Jones.
Um, yes. It's not about public, it's, it's an explanation to this community of how you allow the public to participate and not arbitrarily decide that you're not going to allow them to participate because it's a CUSAC violation.
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Um, okay. Okay, um.
So just say publicly, did you, did you, did you, did you have it on agenda for the public to speak?
I believe that this is the, you know, got something wrong, this is the way the agenda was voted on at the business meeting. It was without that item.
No, no.
Motion to vote on the general.
Let's proceed, yeah. Uh, Board members, uh, item thirteen point five in hard copy, which was the rescission of the award, that's been withdrawn, you're not going to be voting on that because that item has resolved. That's the matter that we talked about in executive session, the litigation, there's been a temporary resolution to that, so we'll be revising that in November, but as of right now, thirteen thirteen point five was off. So, um, do we have a motion to vote on the legal items as a package?
So move.
Second.
Okay, I have Hassan and Jackson. All in favor?
I have a question.
Any posers, yes, question.
Sorry, um, what did you say about thirteen point five? That we're gonna?
Thirteen point, thirteen point five was the legal item that we talked about. That, that's been withdrawn because it was temporarily resolved. We'll be talking about that again.
So somebody's going to give me a response about how it was.
Right, we will, there was a, there was a legal settlement that didn't require that Board action. The Board will be taking action in November and the Legal Department will give you an update.
Okay.
Right now, the Board doesn't have to deal with that.
Okay.
Okay, so I had, uh, Hassan and Jackson and we passed the motion to vote on these as an item. Can I have a motion to actually vote on the legal items?
Motion.
Motion, second.
I have Jackson, who's the second? Okay, Carter in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any posers abstain? Okay, legal items all pass. Your business?
Yes, and next we have all the new business.
Madam Chair?
Um, Ms. Baskerville Richardson?
Yes, uh, so I just have two, um, two questions for the Superintendent. So, um, Superintendent, sir, at the business meeting, uh, oh, I didn't vote, I'm sorry.
Board members, remember to vote.
Sorry, okay, I'm sorry. At the business meeting, uh, you said at the next Board meeting that you would be giving a timeline and process for developing the strategic plan, uh, with the Newark community and I didn't hear that today, so I'd just like to know when, uh, that would, when, when we would be hearing about that. And then I have one more very quick question.
Is anyone planning to answer my questions and I can leave?
So we are, uh, we are, um, uh, engaged in the planning of the process. We hope very much to launch it within the next several weeks and to engage the community and this Board. Uh, we, uh, very much hope to have that process well advanced, uh, by, uh, by the spring and by the time we build the budget for next year. So your, uh, inquiry, um, has prodded us to action and we are moving, we are moving forward. There will be more details available within the next week, uh, or two, we'll be glad to share that. Thank you.
So, okay, so you are saying that within the next two weeks that the Board will be advised as to what the process will be and what the timeline will look like?
Uh, Ms. Val, listen.
Within the next, uh, two weeks, we've been discussing it and we, you will see in the DIP that we post, you will see some evidence of that and it is our intent to develop a process which we will publicize and at that point, we should be able to provide some timelines.
So.
It's actually referenced in the, in the, in the, uh.
In the instruction note, specifically in the instruction and program DIP.
Okay, so let me just be a little more specific. What I am requesting is that within the next two weeks that the Board be advised as to what the timeline is and the proposed process so that the Board may have input into what the final process is that is, uh, actually going to, uh, be rolled out to the public and is going to, uh, be, uh, acted upon. So I just want to make it clear that the Board needs to be a part of the development of the process and the Board needs to be able to provide feedback before the process is finalized. And that kind of inclusion will avoid possible problems later on and I think it's the best, it's the best way to go.
I agree and that, uh, is now and has always been the plan to include the Board in designing the process, so thank you for prodding us to action.
Okay, and my, thank you. My other question is, uh, what is your position, Superintendent, on the expansion of charter schools in Newark?
So it's, okay, so my position is, and the hour is late, so my words may not be particularly well chosen. My position is rather straightforward. I think that the, um, uh, the, I, I don't believe that we should declare an absolute moratorium on the growth of, of charter schools. I think we should be extremely careful and measured in how we go about that. I continue to view, um, as a philosophical matter, um, that, um, our measure of success is that every child has access to a quality public school, uh, and I believe that that is and remains our goal. I've also said publicly, um, that I do not believe, I, I believe, uh, all this talk about New Orleans and so on is just, you know, stuff that gets thrown out into the rhetorical air. This district will always be, uh, majority traditional public schools, that is what I've said and that is what I am committed to. I happen to know that this, uh, this KIP application, which has gotten huge amounts of airtime, um, has been pretty badly misunderstood, uh, by a lot of, by a lot of folks. Uh, the, the fact that, uh, the application has been filed by no means means that even if it's granted, which is not something any of us at any of these tables, uh, will have any vote in, the fact that it has been, uh, even if it is granted, uh, there are numerous opportunities to consider on a school-by-school basis whether, in fact, um, it, it is appropriate in light of budget considerations and other considerations for that school to actually, um, open. I, um, have been assured that, um, whether or not it's granted, no school will open next year, uh, no KIP school, no additional KIP school under the new, uh, application will open next year. And I think it's extremely unlikely that the school, uh, that any school will open in the following year as well. I've made inquiries about this and if it does, it'll be very small. I think there are also questions that need to be taken into account about whether, um, any of the existing charter schools, um, um, should remain, should remain open. Obviously, that number, uh, whatever happens to that will affect the issue about whether any, uh, other schools should expand. So there are a million considerations that go above and beyond the, um, the back and forth, I think, that has dominated the press and much of the commentary here tonight.
Board members, Mr. Reed reminded me that, um, just make sure that you vote on the minutes of the block. Apparently, the system didn't register that. We need to vote on the minutes. Just go, if you go back to that item and just press.
Just note, I'm still waiting for an answer.
All right. All right, so is it? Is there any new business? Is that it for new business?
Motion.
Okay, motion adjourned?
Motion, second.
Jackson, Carter, all in favor? Okay, any posers abstain?
One second, one second.
Yes.
We haven't voted on the minutes.
No, we, we voted on the minutes verbally, we didn't do it in the system.
So you guys are not going to respond to why you didn't allow the public to speak,
We're done. Yeah, the meeting's adjourned, thank you. Just Board members, make sure that you vote electronically in the minutes. Everybody voted for it.
All right, meeting adjourned?
Thank you, meeting's adjourned. Just make sure before you log out, you register your vote in the minutes.